This is Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. It is now 6:18. And this is a meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRS, Section 403 B2D and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted May 3rd, 2022. Members of the public may join the meeting by phoning, by phone, by dialing 1-929-205-6099, using meeting ID 885-89795036, and password 007563, or via computer at the link provided. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmain.org under City Council, Contact the Council. Could you all join me for a Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of Republicans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for a moment of silence. And roll call, Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Present.
Counselor Stackpole is absent with notice. Counselor Hanselman.
Present.
Counselor Martel.
Present.
Counselor Trenchmontane.
Present.
And Counselor Nathan Hitchcock.
Present.
And I'm Mayor Brink. And also present are City Managers Steve Buck and Executive Assistant Larissa Ricketts. And for the minutes of April 18th, 2023, to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting held on that date, it's 23-1-9-2-0-1. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And a second. Martel, thank you very much. All those in favor? And 23-1-9-3-0-1, in order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the City Council held on April 18th, 2023, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And excellent.
Second.
All right. And that was Pete. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All right. And now for the mayor's report. And I will remember. On Monday, I was able to, that was just yesterday, I was able to attend the ALSS training organized by Christopher Gaye. And this was a joint training to prepare our firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, and hotel emergency staff to protect and rescue Sanford residents and visitors. All participants did an outstanding job participating in this event. And I would also like to give a shout out to all the high school students who decided to play some of the victims. It was quite entertaining to have them there. I'd also at this time like to welcome, and is he here, Scott Soucy? Did he disappear? Okay. That was our new fire chief. He came on board and was part of our executive session tonight. First, I would like to welcome our new city council, Nate. This is your first executive session? You've had two executive sessions and stuff? So how do you feel?
It's great. There's a lot of information to process, but I'm thankful to everyone for helping me get along, and it's been great.
Excellent. Well, last week, I invited Nate to lunch in order to welcome him on board. I also invited Maury to join us, as I didn't feel it would look quite right having me go to lunch alone with Nate. We had a wonderful lunch and really got to know one another. The bad news was when Nate told me that I was his junior high principal. And it gets worse. I also discovered that he is younger than my youngest child. So I only feel a little old today. The next day, Steve Buck received a phone call from a concerned citizen complaining that he saw three counselors out to lunch. As I'm a rule follower, I called the city lawyer to clarify if three counselors can meet in public together without posting a meeting. I was told there was no problem with our meeting or having lunch together. So in the future, you may see us out together, please feel free to come by and say hi. And if you have any questions, we will try to answer them. And if we can't, we will get back to you with an answer. Hopefully, we can find that answer. Also, Maury went to a meeting this week, and she's going to report out on that.
So on Sunday, I met at the Nassau Community Center. Carter Friend and his staff were very gracious in inviting the Speaker of the House for State of Maine, Rachel Talbot-Ross Down, to hear about what's happening in York County, but in particular, the Sanford area. They not only discussed the health center, and she gave us a tour, just to rave about this wonderful asset we have in our community. They talked about the critical need, how they've seen extensive growth in patients, and they're looking at expansion options throughout York County. We also discussed changes in what the needs the people are bringing to the table for York County community action, including a very huge uptick in people needing help with their electric bills as they've expanded quite a bit, and the increasing need in our area for immigrant services. It led to a bit of a discussion about the recognition that there's really nothing that they don't do that immigrants wouldn't need, you know, housing, and help with fuel assistance, and clothing, and just, you know, all the basics that you would deal with with anybody. So really, what the difference is, that there, you know, there's some language barriers and some social barriers based on the differences in our cultures. So that seems to be something that, you know, we should all, I'm sure we're all starting to notice and be aware of. We were joined a little bit later by Diane Small, I have to think through it, who's the Director of our Sanford Housing Authority, and also the shelter up in York County. The shelter is, they are soon to be the full, have full ownership of the Old Brothers location. They have been in the process of trying to acquire that for quite a long time, and I think it's coming close to fruition. They have plans and needs, and they would like to see expansion. They'd like to see different uses of some of the buildings. They are having difficulty with the town of Alfred, and what the town of Alfred does and does not want in their community. But hopefully, those things will be resolved over time, because it would be sad to see a community trying to block a much-needed community asset for the entire county. And it's a great site for, anybody who's ever been up there knows it's a great site to kind of take a step back and figure out what you need to do in order to get full-time housing in other communities. Sanford Housing Authority discussed their plans for what they're working on, including a Housing First option. I don't know if any of you have heard about Housing First, but it's basically a deal with the, getting people housed before we deal too much with the addictions that they might have, because having a roof over your head takes a huge burden off of you so that you can focus on yourself and some of the things that you might be dealing with, whether it's mental health or addiction. And so she talked about that, and I think it was a great opportunity for them with having the speaker there as they talk about their funding, what they're dealing with with funding. So she was, she seemed very excited to be able to be there with the speaker there. Also present from the Police Department was Colleen Adams, who is always wonderful. In fact, she was the person who got an invite from the governor to further flesh out what we do here in Sanford with our mental health unit, which I was thrilled to see. She does a great job describing how everybody works together, how the mental health unit has actually made a difference in how we get help for those people in our community, and how we're helping others work out issues in other communities. So again, the speaker has requested to set up a meeting with her, which I thought was awesome. So anyway, there was a further discussion about the good team approach. Present with me, other than those people I've mentioned, is our Representative Luke Lanigan, and Representative Anne Marie Mistraki were both there, which I thought was wonderful, and added good things to the conversation. We talked about some of the bills that are out there. Great discussion overall. Anyway, that's pretty much what we talked about. And the final thing I wanted to say is that it made me proud, listening to this, that Sanford, as well as York County, made very good use of COVID relief funds. I don't feel like it's been wasted, in particularly when you look at the mental health unit that we started, and the addiction unit that the county has done. I think those were great uses of the funds. I made a point of saying I think we were headed there anyway, because I remember when Diane Small first introduced the idea of the addiction unit at the county, near the county jail, and they were finally able to do it because of COVID relief. And I think we made a good use of our funds down here in York County. So it was a great meeting.
Thank you very much. Now for our City Manager's Board, Steve Buck.
Thank you. For the report this evening, I'm going to do several things for you. I'll bring up a couple of websites here as part of the report. But the first piece of information I have is the headlining municipal legislative bills. Currently, there's a resolve to study the effect of current laws and rules on the expansion of broadband. That's a very important bill because of all of the difficulties our city went through to establish Sanford Net Fiber is now being recognized. They're recognizing the difficulties of municipalities having the ability to partner with, you know, existing legacy providers. So they're creating a study committee on that to report out a year from now, in the next session, on what those difficulties are, what needs to happen with pole attachments, ride outs, and the like. And I did note in there that pursuant to a law that we had passed when we built Sanford Net Fiber, fiber is recognized as an essential service in broadband. So that happened in 2019, when we were working on our project, and that's being carried forward at this point in time. There's another act to clarify statewide laws regarding affordable housing and accessory dwelling units. There is no end to the number of housing bills that are in there, the examination of former LD 2003, the timing of the implementation of that. We reasonably believe it's going to be put off a minimum of 12 to a maximum of 24 months, because the state has not yet brought forward, finished the rulemaking. They haven't brought forward the technical support, and they have not brought forward the funding for municipalities to move forward towards making those amendments. But this particular bill is off the wall. It creates an allowance for ADUs without any consideration of any zoning whatsoever, as long as it doesn't make the lot less non-conforming than before, regardless of anything else, you simply can do it, and you don't even have to apply for a local building permit if you're building something new. But I think this one will die on the floor. There is LD 1664, and there's new developments on that today. So there's a bill, there's multiple bills in there asking for changes to general assistance, how long you have to house, who has to house individuals, and such and to that, changing the time from six months to 30 days, and such and to that. But the big focus is changing general assistance reimbursement. We're currently reimbursed at 70% until we exceed the state cap, and then we would be reimbursed at 90%. They're looking to shift that state reimbursement to 90% from day one. News that I learned just this morning in the managers' group meeting, Main Municipal Association was in there. They just recently announced that the State Treasurer's Office is seeing an additional $230 million that they're projecting to come in. So I'm going to be seeing to what that will do for our revenue sharing. I don't have that number yet. I'm anticipating to get that potentially tomorrow. But there's the indication in the review that I had this morning, that the governor is going to issue a supplemental budget as early as this week. And in there, there's expected further support for moving that municipal reimbursement to 90% on GA. So that will be a very positive impact for our community. And last but not least, there is LD 1493. It's an act to increase affordable housing by expanding tax increment financing. It seeks to combine two very important tools, two pre-existing tools. The first is tax increment financing, or TIF, and attach that with a credit enhancement agreement that our community is one of the lead communities out there that has used this tool of tax increment financing and the credit enhancement agreement to return a portion of the newly generated taxes, which does not cause a transfer burdens in our community, in order to meet the debt-to-revenue ratios necessary for affordable housing, workforce housing, construction on rental units, to be constructed so that we use the credit enhancement to close that gap. And it decreases over time as the project matures, and the revenue to debt improves on the project. So we really have put a check box on that. I was the individual that asked for this piece of legislation to be drafted, and Main Municipal drafted it, and had sponsors, one of which, a co-sponsor is Luke Lanigan, here from Sanford. The second element that it seeks to combine is the pre-existing pine tree zone credits, that typically have been focused wholly on employment. But this would, for the first time, take the pine tree zone credits of the 5.5% savings on sales tax, a 10-year reduction on your delivered cost of electrical services, to bring that in as another layer of economic development that the state would provide, but we could extend when you're looking at those housing projects, right? So it combines the two. Both Director Househeel and myself put in testimony in favor of that, because we knew it supported our community's three major pillars of economic development, workforce development, and housing development. So, and that testimony, both of our testimonies are in the backside of this packet. The next piece of information is Haybrook Bridge. I almost hesitate to bring this up, but we know that there's been a longstanding disagreement between the City of Sanford and the town of Alfred on Haybrook Bridge. So it is actually a minor span, not a bridge. It is joint-owned. It spans Haybrook between our two communities. It is a shared responsibility for which the town of Alfred has stated explicitly that they will not share in the repair or replacement of that bridge. They, so because of that, it didn't pass inspection at all last year. It's been closed off. Just received communications from our attorney, who had a communication from Alfred's attorney indicating yesterday that the town of Alfred is having a selectmen's meeting this afternoon to decide if they're going to move towards an act of discontinuance. And their attorney specifically said that Alfred does not view the town of Sanford as in a butter to that act of discontinuance. So I guess I'm staring down the table here. Do you want me to continue to fight the fight, or do we just let sleeping dogs lie? So they're going to discontinue the Stone Road, which is on the Alfred side, right? Because there's no homes between the housing subdivision above on that short stretch of road that leads to Haybrook Bridge. Because that bridge is discontinued now, our Burnier Road has become a dead end, a very long dead end, for which we had to construct, get an easement, construct a turnaround for school buses, for snowplow trucks, and for solid waste trucks to be able to utilize. So I don't know what the outcome of the selectmen's meeting was this afternoon. I'm assuming I will learn that tomorrow. But if they do go forward with an act of discontinuance, there has to be a public hearing process and notification. So, but I do not believe that we will receive notification of that, other than through our attorneys.
Well, that's very interesting. So if they need assistance from our fire department on that end, they've got to go all the way around.
We have to go all the way around.
I wonder how much their citizens know that that's the case.
They claim that their citizens aren't concerned about that. But there's that, so...
All right. Is that impacting us at all?
Well, it's been closed now for how many months, Matt?
The entire way.
Yeah.
Yeah, Main DOT closed it this fall, and we put up signs, and it's closed.
So it's really not affecting us as we function as a city?
There were some concerns from the prior fire chief, that emergency access used that as a corridor to get between Alfred and Sanford.
Right.
Does anyone else have any other bewildering questions? Peter, and then...
I think we should hear from the fire chief if this is affecting the citizens.
I think our fire chief's a little new to understand that. I think we'd want to hear from one of the deputies who understands the area better.
Yeah, somebody from the department.
For now, yeah. Or at least have them get an update. I just think this is laughable, because they have other bridges in their community that they're letting go to hell. And this is just, I mean, I can't believe they're not thinking of their citizens in this bridge. And I'm particularly disturbed by the fact that they're kind of telling tall tales in the community that Sanford, we have our money saved for this. You know, on the record, Sanford has our money saved to fix this bridge, and we have for years. And it really is the board of selectmen there that is doing a disservice to their own residents.
We have heard third-hand, right, that a business owner over there was told by Alfred representatives that the only reason the bridge hasn't been fixed is because Sanford wouldn't put up its half of the money.
Well, I mean, this, combined with other bridges in the community, combined with the way they're treating New York County shelters, it's just, it's a problem.
Hold on one more. Jonathan?
Yeah, I'd just like to hear the outcome of that meeting. I know that you said that happened today. I have my suspicions how that went. So I know we have our half. What, it seemed like it was a fairly small amount to do the repair on that. Do you recall?
About $200,000?
That was five years ago, probably.
So it's probably a lot more now.
I'm sorry, what was the amount?
The estimate on the order of, I think, $150,000 to $200,000 was half, or something. But that was, it was five years ago.
Right.
So there's no plowing concerns? You've worked it out?
As Steve said, we've constructed the turnaround and...
Does the state step in? It's something over water, so...
No, because it's a minor span. Because of the distance of the span, it's not technically a bridge, it's a minor span. So the state...
Minor span, okay.
The state closed it, but they don't maintain it.
All right. So maybe we'll put this back on the agenda next time, when we find out any information. So we can't make a decision yet until we find out there what they've decided.
It's been a longstanding contention between the two communities. We had a signed memorandum of understanding, when I first started working here, that Alfred was going to save its money up over time, and then we could pull the trigger on the reconstruction. Our department, Director Hill, went through the cost estimates at that point in time, did the engineering, get it ready to go, was ready to go to bid. Alfred reneged on the agreement. There's that. We didn't pull the legal trigger on that at that point in time. Now we're down to a closure, barricaded off, signage on both sides. The bridge is, the minor span is closed. And now, in order to, you know, make that final final, Alfred is looking at discontinuing the road on the other side. I just was very offended when the communication came through that Alfred, from their attorney, Alfred did not view our city as in a butter.
Okay. Peter, do you have a question? And then Jonathan?
Yeah, concerning the turnaround, there's area for this, that we can turn buses around. And so are you okay with that, as a result, as a turnaround?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Jonathan?
Is that turnaround completed? I seem to recall that...
Is it what?
Is the turnaround something that's been completed?
Yes.
Oh, it has. Okay. All right. And that's set up for long-term use if needed?
Permanent easement has been obtained.
Okay, okay.
Maury?
What kind of complaints have we had from the citizens who live on that road, Burnier? Have they gotten used to going the long way?
We haven't had any complaints about the bridge being closed, other than before we had the turnaround constructed. They lost service, they lost timely plow service and trash pickup.
Solid waste.
But that's working again. And they seem to be okay going the longer way to work, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I haven't heard anything.
No complaints in my office.
We also have a engineering agreement signed now, an on-call structural engineering services through two firms, actually. Ian Househeel did the advertising, but we have two firms that we can call on should we need design services for replacement.
All right. Thank you. Any, Peter?
So if we do, we take the bridge down. That's on Sanford cost, or are we going to split that with Alfred?
We don't have to take it down. We just...
We haven't discussed taking it down.
You don't have to take it down?
Not yet.
Okay.
If you saw the last inspection report, you wouldn't drive a bicycle across it.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they discontinue the road on their side, it means there will be no maintenance. There will be no plowing. So it's going to be pointless for our, even our citizens, to use that path.
Thank you.
Ian, quick question, Ian. Matt, sorry.
Matt?
Have you heard anything from Apache Campground? Because they're a fairly seasonal business. And I think that bridge closure was after probably their later season. Have we discussed anything with them, and how that might impact them?
Yeah, my communications with them was that they were allowing people that were further down the road to dump their, or place their orange pazy throw bags there, and they're recycling there, until we got the turnaround created. But now that it's there, there hasn't been any communication one way or the other.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Everyone all set? All right. Thank you. Okay, Steve.
All right. I want to bring forward a positive point. On April 20th of this year, Senator Collins praised the Senate passage of the Fire Grants and Safety Act that will extend the federal programs that support local fire departments across the country. Senator King is also a co-sponsor on the bill. As both Senators King and Collins were quoted on the positive benefits of the AFG grant program, Senator Collins used a direct quote from our own Assistant Chief, Robert Arnold, as to why she supports the bill. And it stated as follows. Sanford Fire Department has received AFG awards during the existence of the program. We have benefited from the awards by being able to replace an aged SCBA fit test machine, which allows us to enter, ensure that that air packs that the firefighters wear fit their bodies, and protect them from the dangers of smoke and fires. In Maine, there is a danger of forest grass fires every year. In 2015, we were able to purchase a four-by-four fire engine that is specifically designed to fight wildland fires that exist. This asset helps protect life and property in all of York County, not just Sanford, said Assistant Chief Robert Arnold from the Sanford Fire Department. This week alone, we have responded to fires in the county with the engine four times. Our most recent reward, award, was to fund specialty training for the firefighters. We have been able to certify the entire department and Rapid Intervention Team, or RIT. A RIT is there to engage in situations that involve a lost, trapped, or otherwise down firefighter. As a result, our department is looked, looked to by many of our neighboring departments to share the skill, skill set to keep them safe as well. None of these items...
All right. Thank you. Any, Peter?
So if we do, we take the bridge down? That's on Sanford cost, or are we going to split that with Alfred?
We don't have to take it down.
We haven't discussed taking it down.
You don't have to take it down?
Not yet.
Okay.
If you saw the last inspection report, you wouldn't drive a bicycle across it.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they discontinue the road on their side, it means there will be no maintenance, there will be no plowing. So it's going to be pointless for our, even our citizens, to use that path.
Thank you.
Ian? Quick question, Ian. Matt, sorry.
Matt?
One more question. Have you heard anything from Apache Campground? Because they're a fairly seasonal business, and I think that bridge closure was after probably their later season. Have we discussed anything with them and how that might impact them?
Yeah, my communications with them was that they were allowing people that were further down the road to dump their, or place their orange pazy throw bags there, and they're recycling there until we got the turnaround created. But now that it's there, there hasn't been any communication one way or the other.
Okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
Everyone all set? All right, thank you. Okay, Steve?
All right, I wanted to bring forward a positive point. On April 20th of this year, Senator Collins praised the Senate passage of the Fire Grants and Safety Act that will extend the federal programs that support local fire departments across the country. Senator King is also a co-sponsor on the bill, as both Senators King and Collins were quoted on the positive benefits of the AFG grant program. Senator Collins used a direct quote from our own Assistant Chief, Robert Arnold, as to why she supports the bill, and it stated as follows. Sanford Fire Department has received AFG awards during the existence of the program. We have benefited from the awards by being able to replace an aged SCBA fit test machine which allows us to enter, ensure that that air packs that the firefighters wear fit their bodies and protect them from the dangers of smoke and fires. In Maine, there is a danger of forest grass fires every year. In 2015, we were able to purchase a four-by-four fire engine that is specifically designed to fight wildland fires that exist. This asset helps protect life and property in all of York County, not just Sanford, said Assistant Chief Robert Arnold from the Sanford Fire Department. This week alone, we have responded to fires in the county with the engine four times. Our most recent reward, award was to fund specialty training for the firefighters. We have been able to certify the entire department and Rapid Intervention Team, or RIT. A RIT is there to engage in situations that involve a lost, trapped, or otherwise down firefighter. As a result, our department is looked, looked to by many of our neighboring departments to share the skill, skill set to keep them safe as well. None of these items or actions would have been possible without the support of the AFG. I just thought it was really nice that they contacted the chief. We're actually in negotiations, and the chief flips his phone over here and says, "What?" Yep, so they ask, and he was quoted on the floor of the Senate, so.
Excellent.
So communications update, Communications Coordinator Wilson is working with an exceptional working group, seeking to establish a not-for-profit news outlet, given the recent cessation of the Sanford-Springvale News. Minutes are being published by the group of the substantial progress made to date, and I really, I have to compliment the group, the amount of progress they've made in a short period of time has been phenomenal. So I want to recognize that. The group has established a nonprofit status under Strategies for Insurance and Administrative Support. They're seeking funding models and options. They are ready to send out a second survey, seeking further participation and contributions on their product. They're working to take over the former website and the MailChimp presence of the Sanford-Springvale News. So I want to compliment Zendal Bouchard in here as well. All of that's been preserved, and she's willing to pass that over to the newly forming organization, which is huge. As well as they're seeking to partner with the Reporter paper for print copies. So again, I want to commend the working group on the concerted and rapid progress made to date, and also that Ms. Wilson will continue to contribute to their effort of a greater news presence for Sanford-Springvale. So they mustering, for example, Jordan creates a tremendous amount of content, weekly and bi-weekly, that would flow in there. The school department does that as well. They're looking for other regular contributors in there, so. So I would continue to encourage residents to visit the city's new website and sign up for the bi-weekly publication of the e-newsletter, the Main Street Memo, providing reports on the city council meetings and other activities taking place in our city. It can be found at the homepage, as Sanford e-newsletter, in addition number 13, was just published. There's just over 300 subscribers at this point in time, an average opening rate of 65%, which I'm told is very high, where the city council summary typically is the highest-rated click in there, except for when we have certain human interest stories, like the recent promotion of Lieutenant Murphy. So as Jordan Lurie and I talk about, feed them as much public information, as much human interest stories as possible, so they'll then consume the dry stuff as part of the mix. So it works well, so. Anytime we have a promotion or other employee stats in there, it goes very well. So I've included a link in here to the memo. What I really wanted to bring up is the publication now, in the third month of the Municipal Monthly, that goes directly to the city council, and our departments will be email. It's comprised, it's comprising a dashboard report of the monthly activities of the city's departments. It's now starting with visual representation as well. The publication seeks to provide a monthly overview of the departmental activity published every third Monday of the prior month's data. So I want to commend our department managers, they put a tremendous amount of time into grabbing that information. I will pull that up for you here, just to show you an example of it.
And while you're doing that, I'd like to encourage all councilors to please open that up on a monthly basis and read all the information. It'll help you understand what you're voting for in the future.
So the Municipal Monthly, each department has a report, airport is reporting out what their activities and the stats for the month. Assessing is doing the same. You will note in here that our sales ratios are about 85%. Our assessment to the sales ratios are about 85%, but it's relatively uniform. There'll be a 15% increase as far as the assessment adjustment, but again, it's relatively uniform across the board. City clerk reports out 32 deaths, 19 births, and four marriages. That is not what's happening here, that is just simply request for records. So, because when I started reading these reports, it's like, my gosh, we're going to be extinct here in a few more months, but that's not, it's a request for vital records. What's going on with inland fisheries? You can see the activity month to month of the various categories in there. Code enforcement, you can see their extreme level of business that are in there, you see the type of permits that are being issued and what they're dealing with from a permitting perspective. So they issued 83 permits and 59 inspections last month. Finance Department, you can click that, and the quarterly report is, there's a monthly report that's very similar formatted to the quarterly report, it'll be in there monthly for you to click there. Fire Department stats, what's going on between the various type of operations in the fire department. Love the donut graph. Month-to-month calls, you can see the stacked analysis of what's taking place. General assistance, the activity for the month, as well as, so each month will add an additional month to this, to the analysis, so eventually you'll have a month overview, a year overview, and that will carry through, so that you can visually recognize via the dashboard what the trends are. You'll be able to quickly see those trends, and it'll have more meaning than just giving you stacks of numbers. The HR department, if you wonder why they're so busy there, here's the open positions, there's a listing of where all of those are in the various departments. Here's the activity that they go through, the human resources for applications, the no-thank-you letters, the interviews conducted, the backgrounds processed, and the bios processed, backgrounds and intakes. Current openings, what's coming up for interviews, what's currently scheduled, and new positions that were just recently hired. Information Services, thank you Director Bodine, Bill Bodine is the Director of Information Services. This is in English most of the time when he talks with us, we don't understand what he's saying, and we just nod our head and say, "Thank you, Bill, for your virtualized environment that you provide us on a daily basis." Land Bank Authority, what's going on with complaints and rental inspections, Parks and Recreation Activities, what's going on with the various programming. The Planning Department, the number of permits, we, this is not tapering off, it's just not tapering off, which is a good thing, it's just the activity is constantly ongoing. Police Department, so there, the challenge was, you know, what categories, when you're looking at their call volume, what categories are the most relevant to report on? So these were the categories that were selected, so we'll keep showing you the month-to-month changes there. So for example, in March, they had 3,274 calls, 71 calls within the mental health unit in that month, and then you can see the various categories of burglary, theft, assaults, sex offenses, scams, 911 hangups. For the department, I noticed this 911 hangups. Is there something that can be done about that, right? Not different than you pull a fire alarm, one's okay, two's not really okay, the third was starting to tap you for an expense. So I don't know if there's repeated calls in here or whatnot, but I'd like to discuss that. And then the animal complaints. Public Works gives a summary, because they're very variable month to month, they give a summary of what's going on in the department, and their staffing vacancies. So the larger departments, I ask them to report on the staffing vacancies, because it's the most impactful there. So you can see from month to month. Same thing in the dispatch, you will note that there's no vacancies there, knocking on wood. It's like second time, second time, yeah, second time in 12 years, second time in 12 years.
Twice in one night, you're really...
Yeah. It's going to come back to bite, right? So 10,638 monthly CAD calls, with 2,532 911 calls coming into the center. Treasurer, looking at the outstanding taxes and where the tax collections are year over year, and what's outstanding on personal property year over year. Voter registration, our city clerk put this in as new information, but I find it quite interesting. So you see the various mix-up in the parties, the mix in the parties here, and then you can see the month-to-month changes in here. It's going to be interesting to see there's some shifting here as to what's going on, who's registering for what, and where the numbers are changing, so we'll watch that over time. And so that's a flavor of what that report looks like. So that will be an ongoing basis. I encourage you to open those reports up and take a look at those each month.
And I have to confess, I have to confess that I did not see the push here for the financial report, so I read the whole thing, and then I found out from these guys that I missed a whole section. So I'm guilty, but I'll let you know, we can see that who opens it and stuff, so open your stuff, guys. Go ahead.
The next thing I had is the Sanford's new fire chief. Is appointed in firm, Scott Di Susi started as Sanford's new fire chief on April 27th, the last Thursday, and is now serving full-time for our city. He now resides in Springvale temporarily, as he's looking, he and his wife are searching for permanent housing. Department has welcomed the chief, briefed him, and he has met with most, if not all, of the department staff at this early juncture. Work is started already on the comms staff reports, how we're going to be changing the reporting there, English reporting and billing, an examination of the charge master to optimize cash and workflow efficiencies, as the department is burdened with increased calls for service with no reduction in sight. I wanted to recognize the engagement within the department and the willingness to aid our new chief with this transition. Assessing, major milestone this week, with the retirement of longtime assessor George Green at the end of May, he has actually been a shared service between Old Orchard Beach and the city of Sanford. He's employed by Old Orchard Beach, we contract for 50% of his work week. Both municipalities identified the need to increase the labor hours in assessing necessitating the hiring of a dedicated full-time assessor within each city, each town, city. So Sanford, we start our interview process this Thursday. We have four prime candidates to go through in that process, and we seek to hire as soon as practicable, and increase our assessing department from one and a half FTE on assessors to two full-time assessors, plus an administrative support position. Upcoming meetings, Stent and Trust Development District, we talked about that earlier this evening, are anticipating that they are going to be coming forward for further discussions with the city around tax increment financing to be competitive for future funding sources for main state housing. We have information in there for CDS or Congressional discretionary spending applications as part of the capital stack. Indicated that there was a meeting today with Nautilus, that meeting did take place. Nautilus is the company that's developing the CGA site, the solar piece there, as well as the Boring Main Turnpike Authority land. They ran into some difficulty as far as how the panels from the original design are going to be placed on the city's 17 acres there. They ran into a depth of 14 feet of peat for a large part of the area, which is not unusual here in Sanford, it appears in very strange locations. So to combat that, they have rearranged the panel design and placement, likely actually getting more wattage out than before, because part of, Jamie Cole was with me today, we learned a lot about the rapid change in technology in solar panels. They're actually putting a movable array there of high-density panels that will generate solar on both sides of the panel. So they're going to get far greater megawatts out per acre than any designs that we've seen prior to, but we're still seeking as to whether that has to go through a major or minor site plan amendment as far as the new placement of those panels. Next issue, this is, this is an important issue. So over the last couple of weeks, we've been hit for the need for interpretation services. So to date, there was little need for interpretation services as the in-house capacities of French, Spanish, and a limited capacity with Portuguese had sufficed. Our General Assistance Director White has also been using, on a limited basis, by an appointment, a small local firm of interpreters for services via phone conferencing. Recently, we've had multiple departments have experienced a new influx of foreign language-only individuals seeking services for which we found difficulty in timely obtaining interpretive services. To this end, the services of Language Line Services, recommended by the state of Maine, is being sought for a 24/7 coverage for the entire city. So Randy White is taking the lead, because he has the initial contact information, going to work with our finance director and myself, and we'll be looking at what the cost is to implement that on a citywide basis, so any and all departments will have access to that 24/7 large fleet of interpretive services. I mean, I had a discussion today, have not had time to drill down on that, but the indication is, we have individuals that started in Nigeria, went to Angola, were then flown from Angola to Los Angeles, were then flown from Los Angeles to Portland, Maine, got off the plane there, were put onto Ubers and/or taxis, and are now arriving in Sanford. That was yesterday. So we don't, we don't know any detail, but that's, that was yesterday for us, so. We'll drill down on that. Budgetary impacts, there's a great article in the Portland Press-Herald, tail end of last week, and I grabbed these numbers from there, just to give a comparison of who's doing what as far as anticipated tax rate impacts this year. Westbrook is projecting 8.8%, South Portland 4%, North Yarmouth 3%. Bitterford was quoted throughout the article with all the expenses, but they never got around to saying what their impact was. Scarborough is at 5%, Gray's at 7.6%. My understanding, these are all combined municipal and school together. Portland is 6.1%, Brunswick is 7%, and our city was fortunately able to put that at 2.16. So a bit of comparison there, and I won't go any further than that, but in the back of the packet is the two pieces of testimony that we put in for LD 1493 for, to encourage more workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And if anybody has an opportunity to read your letter, I think it was very impressive on how you addressed that issue, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Next, under Communications and Presentations, 23-178-01, promotion to Lieutenant Thomas And I'm assuming that that's going to be Craig Anderson, chief? All right.
Since you already introduced me, I don't have to do it? Is that okay?
You don't have to.
Oh, thank you.
You're golden. Go ahead.
I struggled with that, you know, like, I just work at the police department. So, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, and Councilors. It is our pleasure to present to you a brief ceremony highlighting one of the most important responsibilities the police department carries, which is encouraging the growth of our team members by developing them as leaders, leaders in our organization, and leaders in the community. Today, we are recognizing another success in that leadership process with the promotion of Sergeant Tom Sayer to the rank of lieutenant. He is joined tonight, and I know that the mayor would like to know that his wife, Kristy, is here, Kristy. And she is an educator as well, so you have some common ground. And what I would like to tell you is that Tom was hired by the police department in 2005. We've had the privilege of observing and guiding Tom's professional development as he has assumed larger organizational roles and greater levels of responsibility since that time. Tom, would you post, please? In 2021, Tom was promoted to the rank of sergeant. And tonight, in recognition of this promotion, we're going to pin lieutenant bars on his collar. The city of Sanford and the Sanford Police Department places special trust and confidence in Lieutenant Tom Sayer, recognizing his dedication, professional excellence, and service to our community. We are formally recognizing his promotion to the rank of lieutenant, and welcome his continued leadership in our organization. Thank you.
Oh, Tom, you're not done yet. Kristy, would you like to come join him, please? It's such an honor to have you be promoted to this way, and I know how your wife is so proud of you, so we always like to bring the family up. Hopefully, there's no other family members out there missing. We like to bring the family members up, because I know that you would like to give them a big hug to congratulate them on this, and then we're going to be, you're going to be, some pictures are going to be taken.
You look great, don't worry about it.
And every good teacher obeys orders, too. And every good teacher obeys orders, too. Excellent, thank you. I hope I'm not starting something where all the wives talk the husbands or the husbands talk the wives out of being promoted because they don't want to come forward. Thank you, guys, very much. And, Tom, sometimes we've asked for speeches, so you just lucked out.
I think he did better than Officer Murphy in not cracking a smile, though.
Oh, that's true.
He held it off longer, so in case there's a competition.
All right. The next under this is 2315801, the quarterly report and presentation from the Director of the Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, and that's Keith McBride.
Good evening, council. Keith McBride, Director of your Growth Council. I have for you tonight, and I know I handed it out earlier so that you could each have your own, very own copy, our work plan for 2023, and I'm not going to walk through it for everyone's sake, but I will, would like to point out that, you know, we have taken some pains in going through this, looking at what strategically means a lot to us as a Growth Council and what we want to accomplish. The, I think, on the slide that goes up on that, I tried to highlight the, those sort of primary economic development priorities that we have. You will notice that in the document that I always give you, this dashboard update that I give every quarter, we try to tie those priorities to some metrics, so we're at least taking a look at how we're doing, tracking it over time. We have also incorporated the council's goals that involve the Growth Council into our work plan. We think it's important to show that we're all working together on the same priorities and the same goals, so to the extent that the council has goals that involve the Growth Council and us needing to take an active role in seeing that those get accomplished, we want to be taking that active role, and I think this is a good statement towards that. We've also incorporated the goals of the Industrial Development Corporation. They are the other member of the Growth Council, and their goals are equally important to us, so those are noted in that work plan. We've also identified, in some cases, some other partner organizations here in, in our community that are sort of working on similar things, and we feel that there's a lot of symbiosis, if you will, there's a lot of common ground, we're all seem to be pushing in the same direction, and we've identified how we might be working together to accomplish those common goals. So, for example, I've had meetings recently with Matt Nelson from the school department and also with the school's jobs for main graduates representatives to talk about what we're doing, working on essential skills and soft skills training for students, and this is an idea, something that came out as we were working on another part of our work plan, which was business visitation. As we were talking, some of the businesses in town who have vacancies are trying to fill them, we're asking them, what are the struggles, what are the issues? This is one of the things they brought up. It would be really great if we had more applicants that were prepared to come to work, and so one thing leads to another. So as we continue to talk with more groups, talk with more businesses, pursue that aggressive business visitation schedule, that's also a part of that plan, we're going to have more ideas on how to work together with other organizations in the, in the city to see that we get things moving forward. A couple of things on some of the current economic trends, there's a meeting going on right now with the Federal Reserve that's going to have quite an impact on whether or not, excuse me, interest rates will be going up again, and I think I've noted on this slide that interest rates are high, it's affecting housing right now. Home sales recently are reported as being somewhat slower than they've been, but sale prices are still very high, and interest rates are high, so affordability is still the big issue. As far as economic performance, we're seeing an increase in GDP, we're seeing an increase in consumer spending, payroll and wages are still high. However, this may give cause for the Federal Reserve to say we need to continue to slow inflation and raise those interest rates, which could have a bit of a slowing effect on all that economic growth. Under normal circumstances, those reasonable rates of growth in GDP and consumer spending are seen as a really good thing, but when we're already in somewhat inflationary conditions, it can be a reason to increase interest rates and try to curb more activity. But we get to see exactly how, what they're going to do about that. I think the Fed will make an announcement tomorrow, so I'm sure it'll be on the news. So labor also is another issue that has not really changed all that much. The State's Economist Office put out a report from the Consensus Economic Forecasting Commission, and it addressed labor. Demand remains very high, supply remains somewhat low, and, but it did note that they're projecting that in-migration, both from other states and from internationally, should do enough to offset at least the retirements that are projected for Maine, which is a good piece of news. One of the big issues that we have to face as a state economically is demographics. We have to be concerned with all the people who are going to be leaving the workforce, and they're projecting in-migration will at least leave us neutral on that part. So I thought that was a very optimistic sort of, sort of viewpoint on that. So a couple notes on some local activity. I don't want to scoop something you have later on in your agenda. The Nassau dorms redevelopment project is underway. You'll be hearing more from the developers, they are in the room, and it is on your agenda today, so I don't want to, I don't want to say too much on exactly where it is in the process, you know just as well as I do, anyway. Manager Buck had mentioned the Stent and Trust project. They are also moving forward, their first presentation to the planning board on their site plan was very well received. They are continuing work on connecting utilities, working in connection with the city on that in advance of the work that's to be done there on River Street. Of course, you want all that stuff taken care of before there's a moratorium on that road. The city's been a very good partner to them on making sure that they're able to do that, get things stubbed out onto the property so that they don't have to cut into that road when they're ready to connect the building to new utilities. They're also working with the Growth Council on reviewing multitude of options for financing their redevelopment, both federal, state, and local options, and the manager's report alluded to some of those as well earlier today. So there's a lot of activity on that project, the developers are very dedicated to it and moving forward. I also wanted to highlight our downtown facade grant project, which Mary Hastings in our office has really spearheaded and done a phenomenal job. This is a bit of a pilot project for the Growth Council, so we're learning a little bit as we go, but so far, we've done very well with it. We advertised the program, sought applications, we received three. We had a, we have a committee that is brought together to review and vet those projects, and we asked for some assistance with Jamie Cole on that as well, to look at it from a codes and designer view standpoint on what work is being proposed on these properties. We found all three of those projects appropriate and worthy of being consideration for grant. Their investment goes, I want to say, more than 100%, more than double what the minimum investment was to match what we were going to be giving, so that we're leveraging an awful lot, I feel, of, of new investment to facade improvements in our downtown with this grant, which is exactly what we were hoping to do. Of course, before any work can go on, before they receive any reimbursement from this grant program for any of the work, they have to receive all local approvals and permits, that's part of the condition, and the three applicants that we've received, the three applications that we've accepted are in sort of varying stages of receiving those approvals. One of them is completely through the process, one of them is in the pipeline right now, and one of them really has yet to apply, so that leaves a little bit up in the air. So we'll, we'll have a lot more detail on that, and we'll be talking about those projects as, as they come to be, but all three of those projects are right close in the downtown, and we, and we, depending on whether or not this program is considered a success when we're ready to wrap it up, we may try to apply for more funding from the state CDBG program and try to run it again, but that all remains, remains to be seen. But it's very exciting, and it's gone very well, it's accomplished what we set out to do with this, with this grant, and big thanks to Mary, who's really been carrying the weight on that. So that's my update for this quarter, and I thank you very much for your time, and glad to address any questions you might have.
Thank you, Keith. Does anyone have any comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
All right. The next is 2317401, Sanford Parks and Recreation Update, and Brady, I, this is probably you?
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I, I heard Counselor Hanselman asked for this to be a fun presentation, so I want to give Barbara all the credit in putting this together because she's the fun one. So I gave her the information as she put the PowerPoint together. There's a couple of fluffy slides to start. The first is just an intro. I'll be covering the, the fall through now, and then I will be covering the, the spring and summer later on in the presentation. So to start, Steve, is it possible to pull this up on the screen just so that people can see it? Perfect. I'm going to give you a quick Memorial Gym update first, it's not this income slide, but it's just that the fiber has been connected from City Hall to Memorial Gym, so we're now able to start the process of getting internet and phones hooked up. Bill is working on our new phones that we will be the guinea pigs of to see how that works out over at Memorial Gym, and now the fiber needs to get to the office space from where it is in the gym, so that's going to require an electrician probably, or somebody with a similar skill set to be able to get the, the holes drilled through the concrete and that sort of stuff to get the fiber where we need it to be. That's just a brief update on the gym, and now I can move into the income, what we've pulled in so far. These numbers are a couple of weeks old now, so it's a little bit higher, but we have almost $43,000 in rental income. It breaks down to $18,000 for facility rentals. Pickleball has brought in roughly $24,000, and line dance, almost $1,000 as well. Not all rentals have happened yet, but they, this is what we have on the books so far, and we have had more in the last few weeks, which I'll speak about in a little bit. So the next slide is the programs and participants. For the community from fall through now, we offered our ski program. Pickleball is there six days a week and a couple of nights as well, and line dancing is on Wednesday. These numbers next to them represent the number of participants, so we had 20 for the ski program, 20 to 30 for line dance each Wednesday, and then we're averaging 40-plus. It depends on the day, and as the weather gets a little bit better, they are going to opt to move outside to play, but they're still inside during this rainy stretch in. For the majority of the fall and winter, we've seen roughly 40 or so participants each day in each session. Some other programs that we ran were some sports and exercise. We had adult basketball at Memorial Gym that was run in the evenings. We also did high school. We did have to cut that towards Christmas, right before Christmas due to low numbers, it just wasn't worth us staffing the facility for three hours to only have a couple of kids come in. And we had high school volleyball over at Margaret Chase Smith, and that averaged around 15 to 20 people per night. We ran the Turkey Trot, which had 23 participa, participants, the Holidays Parade had 24, and then I should have taken a better head count at the Veterans Day Ceremony that was held at the gym, but there was well over 100 people there, and it was a, it was a really beautiful ceremony, and glad that we were able to assist with that. Moving on to childcare and vacation camps, that's, the numbers are right in front of you, we had 20 for December, 36 kids in February, and 40 in April. Looking back historically, this is roughly what we get. December's always our low number one, and then February and April typically flip-flop year to year, one will have a few more than the other. During these, these weeks, we also had open community events such as a magician, Wheels Day, open gyms, and we had a bounce house that was available to the public as well. Our fishing derby was canceled due to the lack of ice on Number One Pond. We did have some sledding. We partnered with Bowlarama to offer a package for families as well, and that's about it over the, the vacation camps. And now we are looking into summer. We have our Summer Helper that started today, actually, so we are, we are in full-time summer camp mode, and I will get to summer camp after I go over the park project updates. I'm happy to say that the school street project is finally complete. It's, this is right next to Public Works, it's a little trailhead right there. The work was done by STS to install a new culvert, a new parking lot, and then the trail has a formal connection now from the sidewalk to the, to the existing trail. Carpenter Park, the survey is almost complete. I meet with Steve next Monday to discuss a couple of things, and then we will get back to the surveying company, and they can wrap it up, and once that is done, we can then go out to bid on this project. And the Mouse and Way Loop, we're almost ready to go out to bid on this as well, I just need to sit down with Director Hill and go over a couple of details in regards to whether we lay fabric down underneath the, the material or not. I have a couple of different proposals, and I'm waiting to meet with him, and I will get his feedback, and then we'll be ready to go out to bid on that. So park rental income, as of today, which is now a couple of weeks old, we have a new, a new contract starting with Coastal Riptide in regards to our airport fields, and that is going to bring in roughly $5,000 this year, but going forward, since the contract starts July 1, and they have already been utilizing the fields, it doesn't kick in until July 1. In years to come, I'm projecting it will be roughly $10,000 per year. Goodall Park is close to 10,000 now, Bluewin's probably closer to 2,500 than this 15 that's showing, and these parks' numbers are all, are all incorrect now because the last week and a half, we have been blown up, our office, the phone lines have, with people realizing that they need spots for birthdays and graduations and all, all of the above, so these numbers are all, have increased as well. And then for programs, right now, we've been working a lot with Little League, the school department, Babe Ruth, SSYAA, to provide field and gym time. It's been especially difficult this week and, or even maybe the last week or so with all the rain, we haven't been able to get out there as much as we would like. This turf is soft, so we don't want to destroy it prior to the busy time of year, so we're trying our best to work with what we've got. For sports, we have a golf program, track and field is hoping to run, and lacrosse clinics as well. Summer camp registration is open. We will be located at six locations, schools and parks. This runs for seven weeks, starting June 19th through August 4th. The locations we will be at this year are Margaret Chase Smith, Pride Elementary, Memorial Gym, and Sanford Middle School. We will be at Springvale Playground in Benton Park as well, and we're hopeful to accommodate 200-plus kids, and we will have bonus weeks available that are not ready for registration now. We typically open that up first couple of weeks in summer, and they run very similar to our vacation camps, where it's just one site, we'll have roughly 40, 50 kids or so, and provide a couple of extra, couple extra weeks for families. Moving on to community events, we have the Memorial Day Parade put on by the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery, that's coming up in, at the end of the month now. I'll be talking about that in, in next week, or two weeks out's meeting for approval, but this will be in front of Property Sub next Tuesday to iron out the, the road closures. The police and I have a plan, so I'm hopeful that that goes through seamlessly. And same thing with the July 3 Block Party and Fourth of July Parade and fireworks, vendors on the 3rd, ski show, fireworks, parade on the Fourth of July, that too will be in front of you for Property Sub next week, so we can get the street closures and all that good stuff done, and then move on to the fun event come early July. And then I, I also heard that an update of the Rec Advisory Board was wanted, so I wanted to say how excited I am for this group of people because when I started last year, there was Mike Perry, there, there was a few people on the committee, but there was only one person who showed up every meeting, and that was Mike Perry. So having a, a bigger group and more people have input of what they want to see and what they want to have going on, and just different thoughts and ideas, it's refreshing. So we do still have some open committee spots for this, but it's a, it's a very diverse group with many different thoughts and ideas, and it's going well so far. And that's it for my update, and I'm open to any questions that you may have that I can try my best to get to tonight.
Brady, what is the timeframe for the Carpenter Park to be redone?
So we will need to go out to bid. Once we go out to bid, I don't know, I, I, it would be at the contractor's discretion, I guess, of how quickly they can get to it.
I was just wondering, is, is the baseball park, the, the field that's there, is anything going to touch that? I know there, there are teams already playing there.
Yep, so Little League plays there. That's one thing that I need to talk to Steve about on Monday. The survey came back, and the, the fence line seems to be in an incorrect spot. It looks like we could potentially move the fence closer to the houses on Home Street. I don't know if that's something that has been talked about in the past or not, so before, before we go about doing that, I wanted to run that by Steve and see what his thoughts are, if we just want to leave it how it's been for if we just want to leave it how it's been for the last 50, 60 years. But no, there will be nothing done to that field. Once construction starts, it'll be around the playground area and closer to the building that's on site there, and then it will be in addition of a playground and splash pad and some just revamping of the area.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any other questions? Ann?
Well, Brady, I just wanted to thank you. This was a great presentation, and pass on our compliments to Barbara in terms of the vibrant slideshow. Please.
Absolutely.
One question I have for you, and this would be a great thing, perhaps twice, I don't know if it's possible, twice a year after your busy seasons, you know, after the busy summer and the winter, because it's really great to see all that our Parks Department is doing in our community. And just a personal note, my kiddos went to the summer rec program, and I just found it extremely affordable, and they had a really great time, and you highly recommend that program to folks in our community as a great resource to families, working families in the summer here. Question I have for you with Goodall Park, I heard through the kind of rumor mill that the use of that park might be changing this summer in terms of Babe Ruth access. Is that something that's correct or in conversation right now?
I wouldn't say changing. I would say they might not get as much time as they have had on it in years past. So what we're doing is trying to preserve the field as best we can for later play in the season, and Babe Ruth puts quite a bit of wear and tear on it. So all we would be doing is moving a few games to Bluewin that were originally potentially scheduled for Goodall. And that's to keep the field in the best condition that it can be. And also, when we've had Babe Ruth there in the past, it's, we have one person who's working the games, and there's a lot of little children that are running around and not a lot of eyes on them as well. So we typically find a lot of toilet paper in the toilets and kind of a lot of cleaning up that we have to do after the fact. So I've been in touch with the new person who's running Babe Ruth this year, and it's something that we've talked about, so I'm hopeful to see improvements there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just to add to that, Brady, just remember, that is kind of a rite of passage field for the Sanford residents. You got to play there. You got to play where Babe Ruth used to play, so I really want to try to see if we can find some resolution to those problems, because I would hate to be just staring at a field, trying to keep it in good condition at all times. It's meant to be played on, and I would want kids to have that opportunity. So just keep that in mind as you're trying to resolve some of the issues you're having, that it is a rite of passage field. For many people, for many parents, they want their boys, their girls to play there at some point in time. The other question I had, so Carpenter Park, back, I've talked to old folks all the time, and they mentioned, so you talked about the field, nothing happening with the field, but long-term, that field used to be lighted. I don't know if anybody knows that, but the Carpenter Field used to be lighted, and it used to be the site of games, neighborhood games. They'd play ball out there, and they'd have lights, and I don't know if there's the potential that that become one of, it's a great field, if we could bring it back up to par, it's a great location field, especially if it could be lighted for some of the sports activities we're trying to have in our community. So I just thought I'd throw it out. As you're doing, I know it's not a very immediate concern, it's just something to think about as you're making plans for that area. Thanks.
Pete?
Thank you. I didn't realize that about the lights, so that's good to know.
Brady, I just want to say the same thing, is more basically about the rite of passage to be on the Goodall Field. It was given to the city for the kids. So that, I know this main is on there, my allegiance is to the citizens and the kids, so I will be very disappointed if kids are kicked off that field. It won't go good, with me anyways. I stick up for the kids, so thank you.
And I can clarify this a little. I mean, we're talking like a couple of games we're moving off of, but we're not moving them to Bluewin for every game of the season. It's just a couple of games in the busy time with the amount of rain that we've had, and with the school department taking priority on that field, that we just need to, we need to be smart about how it's handled. And I'll back Brian 100%. He's the guy who knows the field in and out, he's been here 35 years, and with us also renting the fields out more and more and generating that income, it makes it tougher to accommodate everybody. So we are trying our best, and again, we're just talking about a couple of games that might not be on Goodall.
Thank you. Jonathan?
I just had a quick question about the Memorial Gym and some of the repairs that are planned. Do we have a timeframe for the front entranceway? I noticed with the gun show going on that there was a fair number of, like, it looked like loose bricks and things, that, just want to make sure that there's not safety issues and we get that stuff resolved. So I don't know if that's something that's sort of in your purview, or you have some timeframes on that?
We're on the books for late summer to have that hopefully repaired. It's through Town and Country Masonry, I believe, is who gave us a quote during the budget season, and we just spoke a couple of weeks ago, and yes, end of summer is when we're hopeful to have that work repaired.
Is there any way we could move that up? Because if we've got people in and out of there almost daily, I'm concerned of, you know, possible accidents and injuries.
I can, I guess I can ask, but we don't typically use those doors. We use the back door for everybody else other than the shows that have gone on, so I do know that we have had a couple of shows within the last month for those doors to be utilized, but everybody else who's in the gym is using the back for that reason, so we can keep as many people off of those front steps as possible.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions? Okay, Brady, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
23-179-01, members of the Sanford Police Department propose a plaque to be affixed to the building in dedication and memory of our friend Albert Shaw Phillips. Chief Anderson, I'm introducing you, so you don't have to introduce yourself. I know that's a priority for you.
Thank you so much. Yes, thanks. In your packet, you had a recommendation, and there is a concept drawing of what we were talking about in the public safety meeting. And essentially, we're proposing a plaque be affixed to the building, and it's, the plaque will say something to the effect of, "The Sanford Police Department is dedicated to the memory of Albert Phillips, Albert Shaw Phillips, Al, 1954 to 2023, whose care and commitment to the city of Sanford will forever echo in the rooms and halls of this building. Twenty-one years of service from 2001 to 2022. He was a custodian, a firefighter, a teammate, and a friend." And I think we had good support in the public safety meeting to recognize Al and his service. I've spoken to, not just me, we at the police department have spoken to his family, and they're obviously very supportive of this as well. They may be here on Zoom, I'm not sure.
Yes, I think somebody is. Amy is.
Amy is, yeah. So she, we did tell her that we were going to present this this evening. So what we're looking for is the authorization to acquire this plaque and then to affix it to the building. And it's not dedicating the building, I know there was some discussion about that. It's not changing the name of the building or anything like that, but it is recognizing Al and his service and his partnership and friendship and all the things he did for the city.
Excellent. Any questions? Can I have a motion? Ann?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the plaque.
Thank you. Peter?
I second that.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you for doing that, I appreciate it.
We're thanking Al.
Thank you. All right, now we're on to public participation. Do we have someone on our list? Eric Small.
Good evening, Eric Small. I'm a resident of Sanford. I also work for your police department, in case you didn't know me. Tonight, I wanted to publicly recognize John Stimmel from Great Bay Services and the act that he put forth in cleaning up our city on April 20. We had a very good turnout from multiple city departments. I'd like to thank Matt Hill and his team for letting us use one of the pickup trucks as a dump truck. We picked up a lot of trash, and some city councils are out there, along with dispatch, and I'm sure I'm gonna forget somebody, and I have my notes here to make sure I don't, but it was, the point is, it was a citywide effort, and I think John and his team at Great Bay Services should be recognized for taking on this project, because having participated in the past is quite the undertaking, but it is good to get positive feedback from citizens, and heard many of them that live down in the Mill area, that we spent a great amount of time loading items up in the back of the truck, and it looks really nice down there, and it's good for our business and our city. So thank you to everybody that participated, and especially to Great Bay Services for their efforts, and hopefully they'll pick up the project every year and keep it going. Thank you.
Eric, thank you. All right, there are no other participants? Okay. So there's no public hearings, let's move on to the consent agenda. And are there any questions or concerns about this agenda? Then I just, oh, do you have? Oh, thank you very much. We had one change on item number two. It says renewal medical cannabis. It is not. It is renew cannabis. So the medical word has to come out. So that's the only change. So do I have to, we don't have to vote on that one change, do we? Should we take it out?
I probably, I would. I would have you vote on that, just so that the record reflects as being accurate. Thank you.
So we're gonna pull number two out, and then I'm going to just assume where there's no concerns about anything else, I'll just approve the other two. And so could we have a motion on number two as amended?
I'd like to make a notion to approve the following license request from Renewal Cannabis Establishment, Tier One Property License for Hancock Lane LLC, 27 Hancock Lane, Sanford, Maine.
And do I have a second? Nate?
Seconded.
And all those in favor? Thank you very much. All right, moving on. Under Old Business, 23-2001, order to approve and propose zone change to parcels, and hopefully I don't get these numbers all wrong, R5-70, R5-91, R5-94, and L158. This item must be read on two occasions. This is the second reading. Any questions about this?
I'd like to make a motion.
More? Go ahead and make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this proposed zone change.
Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? There we go. 23-201-01, order to approve the proposed zone change for parcels, R5-70, R5-91, and R5-94. This must be read on two occasions. This is the second reading. Any questions? All right, more? You gonna make a motion?
Just so everybody knows, these are the dormitories in Springvale. Order to, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed zone change.
And could we have a second? Pete?
I can.
Thank you. All those in favor? Except for Bob, not being.
Part one. Good job, guys.
And thank you for staying throughout everything else. All right, under New Business, in order to set dates for the 2023 real estate and personal property tax commitments as follows. First installment due September 18, 2023, and second installment due March 18, 2024, with a delinquent interest rate of 8% as determined by the state treasurer. Interest will begin to accrue on the first installment on September 19, 2023, and on the second installment on March 19, 2024. Okay, are there any questions? All right, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to set the due dates as stated.
A second? Ann?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay.
Fun one.
This is a fun one. Hang on, guys. 23-177-01, voted by the city council for the city of Sanford, Maine as follows. Number one, that a capital acquisition project, the project consisting of the lease of New Harris XL 200P Police Radios is hereby approved. And number two, that the financing for the project in the principal amount of $178,276.05 is awarded to Gorham Leasing Corp., Group, with a term of seven, it's got a seven in there, years, and at an interest rate of 4.29% fixed, an annual payment shall be subject to annual appropriations. And number three, the city manager of the city is hereby authorized to execute the lease purchase agreement and all other documents reasonably necessary to accomplish the purpose of this vote, as the documents may require. And number four, that the city council hereby confirms its determination that the terms of the lease does not exceed 120% of the economic life of the project. And number five, that the license, oh, that the lease is hereby designated as bank quality tax exemption obligation of the city for 2023 calendar year under the provisions of Section 265B 3 of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 as amended. And I'm assuming this is something that we vote on? It looks like we've already voted.
This is where the bond council earns their money, right? So that's, all of that information was required and provided by our bond council for this lease. With Gorham leasing, the city council had approved this in the capital program for the purchase of the new Harris XL 200P Police Radios. This is the follow-up to that. We had engaged to hold as of March 30, 30th or 31st, in order to hold this pricing. This is the end result in viewing this with our bond council as far as fulfilling that lease. This will come out of funding that's approved starting the July 1, 2023 budget.
Thank you. So we do or don't have to vote on this?
You do.
We do?
You do, yes.
All right, so can I have a motion, please? Thank you. A second? Ann?
I'd like to second that.
Thank you very much. All those in favor? Thank you very much. All right. 23-202-01, in order to accept a bid for seal coating and marking the east ramp from Seal Coating, Inc., ABA Industrial, in the amount of, and this price has changed that was on here, it is now $125,877.07 at the Maine Seacoast Regional Airport. And Allison Navia, I imagine you're gonna speak on this?
I will. So if you'll remember, a couple months back, I started the first thing that we did for this project, and said there would be many, many steps to come. This is one of those FAA airport improvement projects, so we have all these steps we need to do to be able to get the grant funding from both the federal government and the state government. So it goes out to bid in a very precise way, and when the bids came in, we had one bidder, we did send it out directly to six different contractors, and from the bid portal, there were a total of 20 plan holders. So quite a few companies were interested in it, but we really only received one bid for it. As we went through that, over the last few days since I submitted the agenda item, that's where the change comes in, we reviewed the bid, the bids tabulated with all of the different aspects of the project, and there's requirements for the federal government to fund these. And one of those is that the mobilization costs can't exceed 10% of the total project cost. And when we went through and looked at the numbers, they did exceed it, so we had to contact the contractor and then ask him if he'd be willing to amend the bid price so that we could get all of that in order. So that worked out in our favor, to the tune of reducing that bid, as you said, to That's a little bit less than $3,500, less than what the original bid price was, so it worked out in our favor. So that brings the total project cost that we're gonna be applying for federal funding and state funding to about $194,000. So what we are looking for today is just to accept that base bid and that, with the additive alternate, in that total amount of the $125,877.07. After this point, what we'll do is this point, what we'll do is use that number to apply for the grant. We don't do anything. We don't sign any contracts. We don't accept moving forward until we receive the grant funding. So, we're not promising anything by doing this. We're just accepting the bid so that we can apply for the grant. Once we receive the grant monies, then we enter into all the contracts. So, you'll see me again on this project to both accept the grant and then also to enter into a contract with this company so that we can schedule and do the work.
All right. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Can I have a motion then?
Motion to accept.
Thank you very much. And a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. And all those in favor? There we go.
Thank you.
23-19701, in order to receive an update on 2023 River Street reconstruction project including scope, schedule, and materials, and approve the surface for the Mouse and Promenade.
Okay. We had our pre-construction meeting for the River Street reconstruction project here in this conference room a week ago Friday. It went very well. As you may know, we did have a last-minute design change on River Street. So, we were able to accommodate that design change and manage those changes, keep the contractor onboard, and keep our schedule towards keeping this a one-season job. So, River Street will receive full reconstruction from the intersection of High Street up to the intersection of Cottage Street, skip over the Cottage Street intersection, and then continue up till Spartan Drive. The initial bid on this before the design change was 2.26 million, and the estimate after the design change came in at 2.3 million, just over 2.3 million. So, a rough difference of about $84,000. There are some additional changes that I'd like to discuss here tonight with you, just to make sure that we're on the same page. The engineering redesign, lighting, landscaping, subs, and the bridge analysis, those bills have not totaled yet, but that's on the order of about $75,000. We've got contract mods coming up. We've agreed to do a public-private partnership with the redevelopers of the Stenton Mill, for which we still need to get that agreement in writing at around $41,000. And then we have additional project items that have come up in constructability reviews with the contractor. So, we're gonna add some larger-sized catch basins, some additional pipe. And then, I also wanted to discuss with you alternatives for lighting. Basically, we are proposing a black pedestrian-level light pole with traditional fixture. And there are bells and whistles that come with that, but we've been advised by the contractor and their supplier, those additional bells and whistles also come along with timeline implications notably. If they're gonna be flag arms or things like that, it will likely push those poles into next year. And they'll have to come up with a new price for those as well. Something else, very similar electric outlets on those poles. You can just imagine, you know, maybe wanting to put Christmas lights on them or something like that, but that, again, is gonna push the cost and the schedule. So, right now, they're, they're just proposed to be standard, you know, very classy but basic pedestrian-level light poles, 15 feet tall, with a bell-shaped fixture and a standard arm. So, I'll get your feedback on, on that at the end of this. Also, we provided through the city technical manual that sidewalks through this portion of River Street are to be concrete. However, this is the Mouse and Promenade where we're proposing to be hot-mix asphalt surface. That has the full support of the Trails Committee, as well as utilities, both overhead and underground. The reason being that it's a smoother surface and more easily traversed upon by joggers. It's easier on the legs and the feet. So, I wanted to make sure that that was brought in front of you to make sure everyone was onboard with that. And, yeah, so, the quick highlights from the pre-construction meeting are that the, the actual work started yesterday out there with the Sanford Sewers District doing trenchless technology repairs on their sewer north of the River Street intersection with Cottage. Then, that will be followed by trenching work beginning next week and the week following by the Sanford Water District and Sewer District in front of Central Furniture. The street will have a full closure on it either north of Central Furniture or south of Central Furniture, but at no time will Central Furniture's access be closed off. That has been coordinated directly with Central Furniture and the businesses around it, to which they are amenable. Then, the contractor will be mobilizing the week of May 22nd, River Street, and again, be doing similar work on that southern end. And the reason for that was initially, he had planned to start at the north end, but after sitting in our pre-construction meeting, the complications with the school came up with traffic. And the decision was made to pull away from the school as far as possible. And then, once the major traffic with the school, the Sanford Middle School, is done by June 9th, with school formally out on June 13th, that opens up the rest of the project. School will be back in session on August 30th, and we're gonna try to minimize traffic impact as much as possible. The contractor will need to maintain gravel road or portions of gravel road throughout the project, and dust will be minimized through the use of a water truck. The project is intended to be binder by the end of the '23 construction season, so October, November. Then, you know, the real things that we need to talk about, you know, the city has permitted that, in order for the contractor to efficiently use time and resources, they're gonna be using road closed, local traffic only signs. Their enclosures will try to be on the order of 200 to 300 feet long. So, those detours, while there will be a permanent detour signs around the River Street project, they'll still be able to get through with things like school buses or shuttles on side streets, but the intent is to detour most of the traffic around. Road closures will be called in and out to Sanford Dispatch on a daily basis, and the road will be returned to two-way traffic passable at the end of each working day. The city noise ordinance limits noise outside 7:00 a.m. to dusk, but per city ordinance, municipal roadway reconstructions are exempt from the ordinance. The contractor, knowing this is a sensitive issue, plans to have weekday work hours from 6:30 to a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and thinks that construction noise shouldn't be typically significant before 7:00 a.m. So, largely complying with the ordinance. River Street will be posted for no on-street parking during construction. And as I said, we've been noting, we've, we've been coordinating both with the Sanford Sewers, Sanford School District, and York County Community Action for the shuttle service. Any full closure by the contractor of River Street will require at least two business days of notice, for which we will advertise on the city's webpage and publicly. Let's see here. So, that's, that's a lot of like the, the public information that needs to get out there, but I can speak a little bit more to the estimate, because I know there've been some discussions on potential savings on this. We had, our revised budget, after we had initially budgeted $3 million for construction, came back, and our revised estimate was around 2.7 after the, after the bids were opened and the design changes became apparent. So, based on those contract mods I've discussed tonight, I'm still confident that we're around 2.7 million. So, some of that may change. In the meantime, we may be looking at having some additional money at the end of the season to do some additional roadway overlays, but I'm not sure.
Thank you, man. I just have a few questions. You spoke about Central Furniture, and maybe this has already been discussed, but about their parking lot, they're still gonna have the same type of parking lot in front of their place?
Yes, directly in front of Central Parking. The, the head-in-back-out parking, while not ideal for circulation on the promenade, is what they've basically got grandfathered there. And after several rounds of negotiation, we decided to keep it that way.
Oh, thank you. Very good. And the poles, the light poles that you decided to, to install, you talked about the outlets. Does that mean they're not gonna have outlets? So, there's not a possibility of ever doing any type of lighting for the holidays or anything?
That's currently correct.
Okay. And the materials for the promenade, that is, what kind of materials? Because I know there's certain stuff that works much better if you're jogging.
Yeah.
Not that I jog. I'd like to point that out.
It, it would be conventional two-inch thickness of hot-mix asphalt. So, that's, talking with Dave Parent, who's not only a superintendent of the Water District, he's a Trails Advocate. He was noting that the concrete on a, on a walking trail creates seams. It's difficult for people in strollers or rollerbladers or things like that. So, it might decrease the use of the Mouse and Promenade.
Okay. And I'd like to point out, it's also easier for a wheelchair on your new materials. Yeah. So, thank you. All right. Anyone with any questions? Maura?
Okay. So, she asked the question, the asphalt, the other, I'm sorry. The other sidewalk is gonna be concrete on the other side?
Correct.
Okay. Which goes along with our design review standards, right? Granite curbing, there's a ton there. What's the plan for that? Are you reusing it there? Are you saving it for Main Street and the other projects that we're gonna be doing? Lot of granite curbing.
Any reusable materials are the property of the city. So, we have right of first refusal. So, we'd probably be bringing them back to the Sanford Public Works Department.
Yeah, because I mean, granite curbing is, I, I had trouble finding it in COVID, but it'd be, it's great stuff. And, you know, we require granite curbing, I believe, on Main Street.
Yeah. Usually when you, when you remove it, you generally count on about 20% breakage. But, yeah, I know that the Trails Committee has been using it out of our yard.
Great. Okay. Because, you know, it's, it's such a valuable asset. I love granite curbing because it doesn't ding up as much. I mean, you can look at my park, property, and I have concrete around the sign. And I hope to change that when you guys do Main Street, because it just, it just, there's no, I can't do anything more with it. So, I'm not a big fan of concrete curbing. I know why you use it. I love granite curbing. I'm glad we're gonna be using it on Main Street. The other thing is disappointing about the flag options and the electrical outlets. I'm trying to think if it would ever be done there. I guess, I'm sure Anne's thinking the same thing. So, that's, it's a bother for me, but it's a bigger bother if the same exact thing happened and you came to us for Main Street, because it would be a hearty no. So, I would recommend planning ahead for all the Main Street, William, Oscar, and Marie downtown projects and make sure, because I'm gonna wanna wait for lights that actually can be used decoratively for our downtown, because, I mean, we, you know, we, other communities make this a priority. And I think we start, need to start making beautification things a priority and not constantly shortchanging ourselves, which becomes frustrating as a counselor. So, there we go.
All right. Anne?
Thank you. I'll just comment that I'm somebody that will come off the sidewalks that are concrete and run on the asphalt roadway, much to driver chagrin sometimes in the winter. But just for that reason, it's, it's much more forgiving. So, I'm glad we're going with HMA on the promenade. As far as the light fixtures, I've been recently working with the Downtown Legacy Foundation for our high school site and installing arms and flags. So, I do know that we can do fairly affordable aftermarket flags, which might be nice if, even if we can't do lighted, say wreaths or something in the future. So, I feel like that piece is fixable.
I, I question whether, you know, you should at least pick a couple key locations to put outlets ground up and just kinda tuck behind with lock boxes on them or something in key locations, at the very least, in case you decide to have something on the promenade. You'd have spots.
Sorry, I had one more. No, I think the mayor answered that one. My last thing, Matt, is it's probably too early to start planning an October doughnut dash on the new promenade, right? I have to wait a while?
Yeah, we still, we still have the other half to complete.
Oh, no, no, I know that. But just to show off that piece, I wanna, I wanna start planning the first, we're, we're thinking about a downtown doughnut dash where you run and eat donuts. It sounds horrible, but it could be really fun.
Doughnut every mile?
Yeah.
Can we just drive every mile to get the donuts?
Whoever doesn't throw up wins a prize.
Doesn't Portland do the beer thing instead of the donut thing?
Yeah. But anyway, we'll, I'll, I'll stay in touch about your timeline, I'm sure, and we'll, we'll see how that goes. Maybe it'll be next year.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? All right.
I do, I do.
Oh, Steve, sorry.
It's very important that you cargo load throughout, you know, strenuous activities. Very, I think if you load up front. Just, just my vote. I'm in.
Like months and months in advance?
Gonna do the vegetarian eclairs for me, because those were really good.
So, I just wanna, to be clear, the council is, is good for the multimodal path being the hot-mix asphalt. Okay. So, we wanted to make sure on that. Putting mast arms and, and banners on poles after the fact is fine for those poles that are out of warranty for us, right? But it will void a warranty. So, if, if we buy a pole that is, was not specifically designed and engineered, and quote engineered for it, the minute you attach something to that, there goes your warranty.
What's the warranty?
That's correct what he said.
What's the warranty?
I'd have to look up.
No warranty is very valid.
I've looked up, I have to, there's obviously a manufacturer's warranty. Maine, State of Maine has a four-year.
It's gonna be so short, it's not even gonna matter.
Yeah, there's such a, there's such a love-hate relationship with, with decorative street lighting. So, we've tried, you know, not, not for the Main Street area, but just for, for reference, we try to keep flag pole designs that are gonna be replaceable in the future. What we find with, with the beautiful decorative flag poles is they maintain those, the molds for those in such short term that you get, somebody slides off the road, smacks a pole, insurance pays for it all and such, you go back to order another one, oh no, we don't make that anymore. You know, so, five years out, you can't get them anymore. That, we'd run into that. That's a historical thing on a regular basis. So...
Steve, do you think that applies to the lights at the school, at the high school? Is that something we need to look into?
I'm sure the warranty's gone.
You don't think it's gone? Okay.
Elevator, one year?
I'll double-check though. Thank you for mentioning that.
Steve's talking about the style. Like you, we're actually considering ordering like seven to 10 extra poles not to be installed, because we have portions of the project that physically aren't being done. Like the end of River Street near High, there's 200 or 300 feet there, which is not being done until the raise grant. The intersection of River Cottage in Winter, there's a section that's not being done. So, we have to have some poles at least to insert there when the project comes through. So, we're gonna be keeping those in storage until that time. But then, like you said, maybe you should have a couple just on hand to just replace when, if and when they get hit.
I just, I further wanna, I wanna commend Director Hill, that the, the pre-con meeting a week ago Friday was, was exceptional. It's just to, to watch the coordination around the table, you know, the, the ledge mirror was there, York County Community Action Transport was there, School Department was there, all of the utilities, water, sewer, everybody was there to, and to, along with the, the Beck Construction. Just, just the coordination and the willingness of the contractor to close in segments and move timing to accommodate everybody was just exceptional. So, I think that's a, that's a, that's a nod to our local contractor as well.
Yeah, we're, we're very pleased to have Lebeck onboard as our contractor. He's got a great reputation and certainly some great contacts within communities and already, you know, great communication even with his subcontractors.
He moved and pivoted without a blink, right? It was just very refreshing to, to see that. So, I just wanted to recognize that. And I think the, the last point that I have here is, you and I and Pete had talked about when we look at the rental cost for the lit signs, the traffic detour signs and such, that we may be able to actually forego the rental of that and purchase signs very close to the same cost. So, we have those for other projects going forward. So, I wanna continue that examination about being able to do that, because we're gonna need it all throughout the raise, raise grant project to have. We have two now. If we had another four at least, it would greatly help us. So...
That, that's been an ongoing, you know, discussion on how we can help and partner with Maine DOT when they come to town too. So, we've been talking about traffic control. We've been talking about inspection. We've been talking about use of our reclaimed gravel. All those things might help us in the long run, you know, be an active partner coming to the table with, you know, things that they might not normally see. So, we just on Monday, we're talking about, you know, them coming down, looking at our crushing process and taking gravel samples to make sure, you know, our 15,000 yards that's there today, you know, is not gonna be there by the time the raise grant starts, but it'll give them some confidence that we have, we know what we're doing.
We just want all the asphalt, right?
It's good to, we'll crush it up.
I know. That's the best stuff going, but everybody takes that back to the plant to recycle it. So, anyways.
Okay. Any questions? Anne?
Well, I guess just as a follow-up, the, the flag arm, when we think about this promenade, once it's all the way around number one pond, I mean, it is going to be amazing. I don't know what other people's thoughts are. Is there, is there a way to get creative with this challenge where we look at every third, you know, like have, have every third light post be something that doesn't get installed for another year, but has a flag on it? And at least we have some opportunity? Because I would like to see some flags in the other, on the other side potentially. And maybe they're spread out every third, maybe it's not every, I, I mean, I don't- And maybe they're spread out every third, maybe it's not every, I mean, I don't know. I'm just trying to think. I picture like, I feel like Back Bay in Portland.
I love the light, I like, like, I love Saco with the lighted snowflakes too.
I just don't know if there's a way to do both things where we get lights up sooner than later, but also.
I think there might be a way to do it kind of after the fact where we kind of have targeted locations where we want a prominent flag and we install a standalone foundation for basically a, you know, a black steel pole and just have it just be a flag pole. And talking with their Parks and Rec's current contractor, you know, they're having a hard time getting the flags that we do have up in one day. So he was kind of scratching his head. He's like, well, if you make all these flags, you know, one, do you really need that many flags? And two, you know, I'm going to, it's going to be here two to three days. Great contractor doing everything we ask, couldn't, couldn't, but he's also talking about logistics, like very frank, just what's the intent? So I, I would offer, you know, we could come in after the fact, install a few at key locations if we really like it.
Well, there's an argument to be made that when we do do Main Street, that we take Anne's idea and we do a little bit more spreading out so that there aren't, there are flags and it looks good, but it may be not be as many as, you know, because Craig's not wrong. It's, it's a lot of flags. I watch him do it and I shake my head and can't believe he agrees to do it every year.
Peter?
Yeah, I just want to better understand why the, we're having an issue with putting outlets for light in for decorations on these coming up. What, could you clarify that for me? Because I can't wrap my head around that.
Oh, there's, there's all kinds of bells and whistles that you can put on these poles. You can put, you know, motion detectors and cameras and gunshot sensors. You know, there's, there's all kinds of bells and whistles. But, you know, the one that most likely came up from their, their process was, do you want outlets on these poles? And I said, you know, we didn't call for outlets. It's just something that they wanted to make sure there was no desire for them.
I'm just speaking out, so.
So it seems like there's sort of a consensus about maybe having outlets. What would be the timeframe to find poles with those? Or are we kind of past that point?
I'd have to go back and check with them and see, see what they can do. We certainly, it's not just a matter of obtaining the hardware. In order to cast the foundations and get them installed with the project, you have to have the bolt pattern which matches the pole. So you have to have a pole that can accommodate whatever bells and whistles that you want to put on it. You have to get that bolt pattern, you have to have that bolt, you have to have that foundation installed with a bolt pattern in it, you know, by the end of this year. You could put up the lights next year. That would also potentially, you know, be a separate, you, you basically risk a separate mobilization from the contractor. Contractor's there, they're doing work, they've got the equipment to do everything they need to do. And at the end of the job, they're moving out. If they have to come back in, you, you, you get charged like that additional fee to come back in and do additional work.
You know, the factor of if you're, you're putting outlets on the poles with, with lights on the top, historically, it's, it's two different circuits, right? So you've got a circuit energizing the light, you've got a circuit energizing the, the plugins, which typically you put on a timer with a photo Y timer combination to do that all on, on the pole, that there's a timer sensor and everything that, that's accommodating the light and the fixture itself. So historically, it's two different circuits. So you have to plan for the conduit, electrical runs, control mechanisms and all that sort of deal. So it's, it's a process.
While you're building this?
You'd have to do it while you're building it. I'm just, I'm just giving you the indication, it's, it's not as simple as ordering a pole that has an outlet on it and just wiring it in the same branch circuit as.
Sorry, I forgot to put my mic on. I just think that would be a little helpful with some numbers. Thank you.
I have seen the, and I think we talked about this in another meeting, I can't remember what the context was, but solar lights have really stepped it up, you know, what they're able to do now. And I, I think there's maybe an application for solar snowflakes or solar lights that may save us costs in terms of, I'm more, in my mind, I was more worried about the flag piece. And I don't dislike Matt's, I can't quite picture Matt, what you're saying with just a post, but I'm sure it can be done really nicely. But, so I don't know, I'm less, I think there's some solar application that we could use in lieu of the complicated electricity perhaps.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons I always said a couple outlets ground level and key locations. That that's the, that's why I said it that way. It's like, you'd probably, where are you starting? Is it starting, it's starting at High Street, right? Like, there's a good location. It would be nice to have potentially an outlet near that area because it's near, like accessible water and, you know, things that you might end up there. You know what I'm saying? It's, you know, key, there aren't a few that I can think of along there because there's so many houses along there. And so it's really not, it's, you wouldn't need too, too many added, just ground level pop up, put a box, put a cover that's blockable and, you know, if we ever need an outlet or power in that area, it's there. So I agree with Anne in that that's not a critical one for me because of, because of solar options. The flag pole's disappointing. That is disappointing. But I wouldn't want it every one. I, I agree, it's a lot.
Matt, are there, when we're looking at the style of poles that you're looking at, are there some that are exactly the same except they have the add-on of the flag arm? Meaning we could use the same pole for, no, it's like a totally different.
They would be a totally different pole, they would be ordered and they would not be installed this year.
And they wouldn't have the same footprint to your point earlier about the, okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, I have a question of Steve because it sounds like we're waiting on maybe not the materials for the promenade, but the materials for the lights, some information. So can we still just vote on this as this is?
Yeah, what I'm really looking for, for a vote this evening is the approval of, of the HMA for the surface for the multimodal trail because that's, that's different from.
Okay, all right.
The, the, the lights aren't something we've mandated, so we don't necessarily need a formal vote. It can be a continued comment.
Correct, okay. Can I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we allow the asphalt multimodal style sidewalks for the multimodal path on River Street.
Okay, thank you. Anne?
And I'll second that.
All right, and all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, 23-195-01. In order to consider a request for, oh, to fly, I'm thinking, a fly? Sorry. To fly a Rainbow Pride flag on the flag pole in front of City Hall for the month of June pursuant to the resolution regarding display of flags at city property adopted July 5, 2022. So you remember, we already have an ordinance in place to be able to do this. So we don't have to do that. We're just talking about, can we put this flag? So can I have a motion on that?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Anne?
I'd second that.
All right, all those in favor?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sorry.
This, this was kind of a heated debate last year as well. I'm going to oppose this because I, I see this as a political flag. And I, I think that it's divisive and does not be, be flying at our City Hall. So I'll be opposing this and I, I don't think we should be flying this flag here. Thank you.
Okay, Anne?
And I'll just respectfully provide a different perspective, which is that, that by joining many other municipalities in our state as well as across the country, we're saying that Sanford recognizes that we have diversity in our community and that we're a safe place to be. And I, I think that's important. And I'll share a personal comment that last year, we flew the Pride, Pride flag for a short period of time. But I did have a young adult reach out to me and just share their thanks that our community actually made a step in, and it was, it felt like a bigger step to them than having the organization that does the Pride picnic and go on park, but that our community actually seemed supportive of them. And so that, that felt really important to me. So that's why I brought this forward and am in support of it. Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Nate?
Thank you. So I understand that we have this, this, you know, ordinance in place and it's been sort of litigated. My, my point isn't so much on that. It's more, I guess, I always have a little hesitancy when I see these types of rules in place. Not for the particular vote we're having today, but just in general, when it comes to what happens if we were to vote no on something? And sort of, I don't know if there's some sort of trap that comes into play of us turning down any particular type of curmater flag that may represent some sort of speech. You know, it goes to the proper channels. We say no, what does that mean for us, you know, exposure wise? So, you know, these are always a little bit, you know, I think it's a little dicey, I'd say overall, but, you know, I understand the laws are in place here to fix that. And, you know, I'm not here to, here to change any laws. It's just, just wanted to voice that concern.
Okay, Steve?
So that's, that's exactly what we, we uncovered in the research last year. You know, it wasn't, it wasn't just as, as, as easy as, you know, a request came forward to fly a particular flag and the council, sure, go ahead and put it on the pole. So when you look at the Supreme Court of the United States decision that was on this, this, this is, you know, I'm not telling you as a attorney, right? There's a whole bunch of case law on this that the city council would get itself in, in problematic situation absent the policy. With the policy, you can exercise your governmental free speech, you can vote. Absent that, there's unfettered access because that's where the decision came from. People were just putting flags up the pole without authorization. And then when a, when a council tried to say no to that, that's when the problem happened. So by having the resolution in place, you can make a decision as a council and keep yourselves out of harm's way. But by, without having that resolution that's already in place, you, you could run into that occurrence that you're speaking of. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we already have first and a second. All those in favor? One, five, and opposed, one. One not present. Thank you. In order to change the date of the first city council meeting in July from Tuesday, July 4th, now you know why we're changing it, to Tuesday, July 11th at 6:00 PM in consideration of Independence Day holiday. So can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
And, oh, any discussion on it?
I just want everybody to know it'll be the 11th and the 18th. We'll do them right in a row because we have to do two a month. We'll try to keep one of them really short because it's July, okay?
Can we request no executive session that day?
Oh, we still will have the subcommittees on those days.
So the 11th will be horrible. So just remember that.
It's a long day.
Super Tuesdays.
Super Tuesdays.
That's what we call them here, Super Tuesdays.
All those in favor? Thank you. All right, and now we're getting to all the hearings we're going to do. And so Ian is going to come up and help us out with all this. Yep, we're going to do 23-180-01. This, I'm going to open the hearing, I'm going to use that. To determine whether Two Libby Lane identified as tax map, and is that an I? Okay, I-15, Lot 5. And further describe in a deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book 15933, page 587, and mortgage record book at 14524, page 66, is a dangerous building for a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Section 2851, 2859, and to determine what, if any remedy is appropriate. So I'm going to turn this over to you.
Thank you. So I'll try to, I'm going to summarize some things at the beginning here. And I'm noticing how loud my microphone is, so it's kind of echoing in my ear. And first of all, I, I usually give you a paper handout of what to read. And I was reviewing it before the meeting. And I've highlighted in bold just a, one, one piece that needs to be added. So I'm going to hand you that. So that's an, an addition that I neglected to include in the script, but it is in the findings in order that are draft before you tonight. I've gotten in the habit of preparing a draft findings in order. So if there's any changes or deviations you want to make from that, you can as well. These are dangerous building hearings. There's a presentation by myself. And then if there are representatives from the property, they may speak. And I know that for 12 Central, there's someone who wants to speak. I don't know about the property we're disposing of first and possibly so on 789 Main Street. Just to give you, go, go quickly as possible through these. I wanted to start off with the photographs. Two Libby Lane, this is the property. It's pretty, this is an aerial photograph. We just had recently, recently aerial photographs flown from, for the city for 2022. Looks pretty well kept from above, but you can see that there's some windows boarded, windows broken. You can see signs in the windows indicating that it's vacant. I think, I think each one of these panels here has a, a sign put in it. And just a close-up of the, of the boarding. Some pictures of what's inside. The, the determination of abandonment is that the material that's inside, you know, is personal property, but it's very much destroyed. It's debris at this point. It's, it's unsanitary. This is what the inside of the garage looks like. Just another picture of the inside of the garage. The, the electrical power is still connected to the building. You can see the line up above, but the electro meter's off. There's a shed in the backyard, fair amount of household things in here. Again, debris and junk, cans of paint, other debris under leaves that have been left. You can see some of the gutters have fallen off the side of the building or in the backyard. And this is a picture of the backside of the building. This is what the inside of the building from the back looks like. That's a television. Looks like they've opened up some of the walls in some places, just different debris that's, that's around. And you can also see that's a piece of sheet rock, the backside of a piece of sheet rock there. And then the stairs up to what I believe is the front door. In the back, these, these decks are in very poor shape. You can see missing railings and balustrades. I could have pointed out the, the top of this chimney is in, in very rough shape as well. I'm not going to scroll back to the other picture at this point. There's an oil tank here that's possibly water, but it could also be possibly oil. But it's, it's just generally uncared for. These pictures were taken, not this Saturday, but two Saturdays ago. That would be on, on April 22nd. And just another picture of the corner as well as, as a close-up of the front door. I will, I've got this pretty well bookmarked for you. I'll try to go through here. The, the property owner is under an estate of Gary Gutten. He's owned it since 2010. We were able to serve the owner, Tammy Gutten, locally here in Sanford. Aaron, the code enforcement officer, was able to do that. This is the deed. There is a mortgage on this property and that, this is the assignment of who holds that mortgage. The new Penn is the entity that, that holds that. of who holds that mortgage. Um, the new pen is the entity, um, that, that holds that assignment, and they did receive their certified mail, this is a copy of that. Uh, this was also filed in the registry of deeds, here's the notice of hearing, um, with who was, um, copied for, um, um, service or process. Um, and then, um, I will invite Aaron up in a minute, um, so he can run through some of the notice of violation issues with you. Uh, I'll point out, um, that, um, there's a, that they, the, the, there is a vacant building license on this, um, and, um, they submitted a vacant building license plan. And, um, it's very basic, um, that they will, um, maintain it, um, until, um, it's reoccupied. So that's the state that it's been in, uh, for quite some time. Um, the police report is in there, I, I didn't review this in, in detail, um, but it looks like in two thousand and fourteen, there was a, a burglary, uh, in progress, um, and a variety of, uh, building checks, um, in two thousand and two, uh, two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one, um, and then all the way back to two thousand and eleven. Um, here's the utility report, um, they are current on property taxes, that means the bank, um, is, is, um, is, is following through with continuing to pay, um, the taxes, um, in the owner's absence. Um, and the water's been off since two thousand and thirteen, so that's probably the strongest indicator of how long this property's sat vacant and abandoned. So we're really talking about ten years at this point. Um, there's zero balance on water or sewer. As I mentioned, the electrical service, um, is, is, uh, the meters absence, absent but not disconnected, and, um, the vacant building license is current. Um, Aaron, um, is, is there, you wanna walk us through just briefly the, the notices of violation here?
Sure. Evening councilors. As you can see before you hear the notice of violation, this was dated, uh, back in March, so there will be a little bit of a difference between what the pictures Ian showed and mine will show, mine, I'll have a little bit of snow on them. Um, but, uh, just going back to the violations, uh, there'll be pictures at the end of this, but there was a damaged chimney, the masonry was rotted, a, a lot of, of the exterior trim, holes in the exterior. Uh, the property, as you can tell, while the exterior has been maintained by the bank, you can probably saw that, uh, it was mowed, the grass wasn't overgrown, uh, it has been abandoned, as you can tell by the exterior condition of the building itself and the structure, and how the interior looks through those windows. Uh, lack of, um, keeping up with the paint, there's rotted surfaces on the trim, uh, the deck surfaces are damaged, uh, the de wa, uh, walls and debris inside, you saw pictures through that, and you'll see those again as well in my notice that was sent. Uh, the deck has missing pieces, loose boards, the risers are completely missing, uh, guardrails gone, as well as services. So, as was noted, water's been off, electrical's off, uh, most likely the, because of that, there's no heat, uh, that had monitor heaters in there. Uh, there is broken windows there on the garage, and as you can see in the photos here as we go down, uh, somebody had plowed the driveway, so that's usually the bank, uh, has hired someone to plow for access. Um, but, again, nothing has been fixed or repaired or kept up with, uh, most likely since two thousand and thirteen. Um, and again, very similar pictures, some of the notices that you can see there, as well as the condition of the exterior steps, uh, missing hose bibs, uh, missing guardrails, risers, balusters. Uh, the overall condition of the electrical service was very poor and cracking as well, weathered, and then some of the close-ups of the notices that are displayed prominently throughout the windows. And then, uh, again, the balusters condition, the, the decks are very poor condition, and have not been maintained at all. Uh, so, with all these things, you can see that the property has been abandoned, uh, not been kept up with, and is in a, in a state of disrepair. Any questions that I can answer for anybody?
Any of you have any questions? No.
Thank you, Aaron. Um, so, just to make sure it's clear, there's a, the mortgagie has changed the locks, the bank has taken possession, um, the owner's deceased, um, the, the heir that we've notified hasn't taken possession either. Um, Aaron has said that this is abandoned, uh, as the code enforcement officer. Um, and then, um, it, it, as it's, as it is abandoned, it, it does constitute a fire hazard, um, inadequate maintenance, as well as abandonment, um, and it's sat for ten years, um, without climate control. Um, so, do you have any questions for me at this point?
Is there anybody here to speak?
We could ask that too. Um, maybe there's possibly someone online, but I recognize everybody else in the room.
No, no. Any questions?
No.
Okay. I'm gonna close the hearing, then, and, uh, twenty-three, one-eight-one-zero-one, based on the testimony and other evidence present at the hearing pursuant to seventeen M.R.S.A. section twenty-eight fifty-one, twenty-eight fifty-nine regarding, uh, Two Liberty Lane, Libby Lane, um, what does the city council find are the facts, and what does the city council, um, adjudge?
Madam Mayor, based on the testimony of those present and, present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the city, Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence, and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, otherwise known as the property, is abandoned and, as defined in thirty A M.R.S.A. section three-one-zero-six B, and City Code, section one-four-nine dash six-point-three, and as evidenced by, no water service to the building since November eighth, two thousand and thirteen, and no habitable occupancy since that time. Windows are boarded and broken, electrical meter is absent, personal property and furnishings are absent, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable, and generally describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. A mortgagie has changed the locks, the owner is deceased, and there is no evidence that an heir or personal representative has taken possession. The code enforcement officer has made a determination of abandonment, and the property has deteriored so as to constitute a threat to public health and safety, including decks and exterior stairs. B, the most recent inspection on March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, found violations of City Code, section ninety dash thirteen B, subsection five, twenty-fifteen International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Section three-oh-four-point-one, damaged chimney, rotted exterior trim, and hole in exterior. Section one-oh-eight-point-one-point-five, property has been abandoned and is vacant. Section three-oh-four-point-two, missing paint. Section three-oh-four-point-seven, gutters are broken and falling off. Section three-oh-four-point-twelve-point-one-two, missing handrails. Section three-oh-five-point-one, damaged walls and debris inside. Section three-oh-five-point-four, deck unmaintained. Section one-oh-eight-point-one-point-five, lax functional mechanical and plumbing systems. Section six-oh-four-point-three, electrical entrance is cracked and broken. Section three-oh-three-point-one-three-point-one, broken and boarded window. C, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied without an approved rehabilitation plan. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is abandoned and unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant and without climate control, constitutes a fire hazard because of its state of abandonment, and constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance and abandonment. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated.
Do we do a vote on this one?
I need a second. Mine was the motion.
That, her, hers is a motion, the second, Peter?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Okay. Twenty-three, one-eighty-two dash zero-one. Oh, wait a minute, sorry, this hearing is open. Then, uh, twenty-three, one-eighty-two zero-one. This is a hearing to determine whether Twelve Central Avenue identified as a ma, tax map, a J thirty-two, lot forty-nine A, and further describes in a deed recorded in the York City Registry of Deeds at Book, uh, one-seven-five-one-nine, page four-sixty, and mortgage record at Book one, seven-five-one-nine, page four-sixty-two, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of seventeen M.R.S.A. section twenty-eight fifty-one dash twenty-eight fifty-nine, and to determine, um, what, if any remedy is appropriate. Ian?
Thank you. Um, so I will go through the pictures first, um, and also try to cover the constitute, what constitutes abandonment in this, um, case. So the water's been off to this building since May, um, twenty-fifth, um, two thousand and twenty-one, so not as long as the last one, um, but still two years at this point, so it hasn't been occupied since that time. Um, this is a picture of the rear door of this building, you can see a number of signs that have been put up, um, by, um, property management companies. Um, the, the, actually, the, the steps are, um, very spongy, um, they're, they're not in good shape at all, um, not the best way to approach this building. Um, this is a shed that's in the back of the building, uh, just a, a number of junk and debris spilling out of this, uh, this shed. Um, there's a slight difference in the photos that Aaron took during the winter, uh, versus the photos that were taken two Saturdays ago of, of this, um, of the shed, um, and what's moved. This is a picture from the rear door of the building inside. Um, you could see it's, it's half moved in or half moved out, uh, something to that effect. Um, same thing with the personal items here, that's, uh, it's hard to tell, um, well, it, it appears to be junk and trash and debris, um, and looked like there was a dog crate in here at some point. Um, some of the pictures that are, I mean, some of the notices that are on the side of the, the, on the door, um, one is marked confidential, um, and then the other one is the notice of this hearing, um, as well as, um, uh, I think s, someone from, from a property management company, um, regarding the, uh, the mortgagie, um, indicates that the mortgagie has changed the locks. Um, here's a picture, uh, one of the ex, other accessible windows, uh, very close to the other one of, of what's going on inside. You can see a, a screen kind of knocked to the side, and, uh, here's some of the other debris, uh, spilling out from the shed, a bunch of things thrown in here. I think the door might have been removed, um, since Aaron's pictures, um, from the, from the winter. Um, this is a picture of the rear side of the building, um, and, um, it's in, you know, it's, it doesn't look particularly, um, bad, but you, you don't really know. Uh, you can see the screen is, uh, pulled away, um, doesn't indicate that someone's living here. Um, this is a picture from the front side of the building, um, and, um, could look normal, um, except that there's a, you know, missing, um, missing electrical meter on the side of this. Um, Aaron will point out in his, uh, notice of violation that this, this whole front, um, porch is pulling away from the side of the building. Um, you can see some, um, issues as well regarding the chimney. Um, and, uh, here's a close-up of the, the, the electrical meter missing. So, um, a, as far as, uh, uh, other indicators of abandonment, um, I think that about covers it as far as, additionally, the code enforcement officers made a determination of abandonment, but you'll hear from Aaron on that. Um, I wanted to walk a little bit through the, uh, the service and process on this. Um, Robert Ruby has owned the property uh, since two thousand and seventeen. Um, I will point out the, uh, the prior owner, that's Alton Rollinsford LLC, um, they're the owner of Eleven Kimball that we've been discussing, um, regarding dangerous building hearing. Um, for me, um, it raises questions, um, as to, um, the, the property repairs, uh, that were done to this building before sold to Robert Ruby. Uh, I'll also point out that Aaron has some pictures that look like the ceiling, um, has, um, has fallen in, um, in places, uh, in the intervening time. Um, so, um, that, that the, that the porches have fallen off, um, is not something that, um, that, um, would have taken place, um, uh, during Robert Ruby's tenure, but are longstanding, and it looks as if the property was a prior foreclosure under the ownership of Wells Fargo Bank before Alton's Rollinsford. Uh, and I can say that they probably also purchased it, um, at auction for thirty-nine thousand dollars, and then resold it for a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Uh, this is the deed, um, to Robert Ruby, um, and, um, this is the mortgage, um, and then the assignment. Um, and, um, it was recorded in the registry of deeds, the notice of hearing. Um, the, the mortgagie, um, did sign, uh, for that, and, and I've had a conversation, um, with their, uh, legal counsel, um, who is also, who is in attendance, uh, tonight, I, over Zoom, I do believe. And then, um, we were able to find, uh, what looks to be Robert Ruby, um, in, uh, Vermont, um, and I have not heard from Robert Ruby, uh, this was delivered by certified mail to him. Um, police reports, um, there, there are a number of, um, of, of calls, uh, associated with this property and, and nearby, um, for, uh, since two thousand and twenty through two thousand and nineteen, um, but that is in your material, and you can review that. Um, the, the water, so property taxes are current, um, so the property taxes are being paid. Um, I didn't inquire as to who was paying the property taxes in this case. Uh, the water has been off since May, uh, twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, and there is a five-hundred-eleven-dollar-and-twenty-eight-cent lien on this property is, as, as well. So that is a lien, it's just not amount past due, it actually is a lien of the water, uh, district. And the sewer's inactive, and no amount owing. Uh, as I mentioned, the electrical service is not disconnected, but the electrical meters are absent, and, uh, the, there is a vacant building license on this property, but, uh, no rehabilitation plan under the vacant building license, um, has been submitted, although it has been requested. Um, Aaron, um, would you like to walk, uh, the city council through your, um, of notice of hearing, I mean, uh, by, notice of violations and, and anything else?
Sure. So this was done on March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, uh, sent to all the appropriate parties that, uh, Ian mentioned there, mortgager, and the address, the only address that we had at the time for the, uh, owner was Twelve Central. Um, so as you could see here, the, uh, there's no electrical, uh, no water, no sewer service found at the property to be active, meter was off, and the service wire again, uh, cracked. The property was actually unsecured. Uh, when I went to the property, the side door was completely opened, um, and there had been no maintenance, uh, so the driveways had not been plowed, unlike you had seen on Twelve Libby. Um, so you could not get to the property easily if there was an emergency. Um, junk and rubbish, um, as Ian pointed out, there's actually more visible now, uh, than when I was there, as you'll see in the pictures, and in the pictures you also see in the interior where, uh, due to the vacancy, and most likely it being unsecure, uh, the ceilings had been deteriorating, peeling, uh, you'll be able to see that all over the floor. Uh, trim siding cracked and damaged, uh, unmaintained. Uh, there's also mildew on the exterior of the property as well. Uh, the deck there on the front has deteriorated with broken wood attachments, uh, and would need a building permit to fix and repair, as well as the side deck that Ian pointed out as being spongy would also need, require a building permit to, to repair the issues that are there. As we go down, you'll see the photos that I took. So it was a little bit of snow, uh, on that day. Um, so just, again, while some of the siding does not, some of the sides do not appear, uh, you know, to maybe be abnormal, uh, the condition is not well, and is vac, it has been abandoned. You can see the mildew over here, that's just been, uh, growing on the side of the home, unmaintained, there's some of the debris, as well as the driveway, um, may have been plowed once during the winter by somebody, uh, someone probably broke that gate, uh, doing it, uh, but has since not, uh, had not done that. Um, so here's the steps and the condition, nothing has really changed, except for the snow being gone. Uh, but again, debris, mildew, and then you can see some of the fly, uh, flashing on the back of the property, uh, being removed, most likely is blown off. Uh, the lock boxes, and again, those same notices from the mortgage, uh, servicing company stating who is servicing the property and who is maintaining it. Uh, inside, you can see here, the, the paint has been, uh, falling off onto the floor, and so there's always some weathering issues due to the climate inside, and then you can see, um, while the shed there is somewhat visible, you can't see all the items as you could in Ian's photos as well. you can't see all the items as you could in Ian's photos as what's being taken out. So again, under these conditions, this property would be considered to be abandoned and vacated. Any questions for me?
Do you have any questions for me at this time? I mean, we've got someone from the-
Any of you have any questions? And I think you have a Susan Sawyer.
I think that's who would like to speak, yes. Ms. Sawyer, please, please let us know what you'd like us to hear. Thank you.
Sure. So I just wanted to make it known that we have had property preservation persons on the, on the premises. And I know they've done some removal of shrubs and they've done like tree removal. They're working on the peeling paint on the building. So I guess we're just trying to work with the city and to find out what you would need from us or if there's something that we need to do moving forward to make this better for everyone.
Yep. So as we talked about, so with, with these properties, the, the findings and orders very typical as far as submitting a rehabilitation plan. And so that, that would be a fixing the property defects that have been identified, as well as a, a plan for bringing the property back into, to habitable use. So that might be completing the foreclosure process and addressing any other code violations that are discovered in, in, through an inspection of, of the interior with the property management company present. And not very complicated, but that, that's what, that's what would be, we, we would be at, the city would be asking if the city council was to find this to be dangerous tonight.
Right, thank you. Any of you have any questions? All right, I'm going to close the hearing.
It was Sawyer, do you have anything else you need to add or are you all, you said at this point?
No, no, I appreciate you going through the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. 23183-01, based on the testimony and other evidence present at the hearing pursuant to 17 MRSA Section 2851-2859 regarding 12 Central Avenue. What does the city council find are the facts and what does the city council adjudge?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record. The Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, i.e. the property, is abandoned as defined in 30A MRSA Section 3106B and City Code Section 149-6.3. And as evidenced by, no water service to the building since May 25th, 2021, and no habitable occupancy since that time. Electrical meter is absent, personal property and furnishings are absent, and any remaining personal property is damaged or unusable and generally described, describable as junk, debris, household trash, and possibly hazardous, and is a fire hazard and is unsanitary. A mortgagee has changed the locks and the code enforcement officer has made a determination of abandonment. B, the most recent inspection on March 8th, 2023, found violations of City Code, Section 90-13B Subsection 5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code as adopted by reference. Section 604.3, electrical meter absent and entrance is cracked and broken. Section 108.1.5, property is unsecure and abandoned. Section 308.1, junk and rubbish found on side porch and around shed. Section 305.1, interior ceiling paint has peeled onto the floor. Section 304.1, trim and siding is rotted and cracked. Section 302.1, mildew on exterior property. Section 304.1.0, deck has deteriorated wood and broken attachments. Section 304.1.2, missing handrails on the stairs. C, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied without an approved rehabilitation plan. Based on the foregoing findings, the municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and nuisance because the building is abandoned and unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant and without climate control. Constitutes a fire hazard because of its state of abandonment and constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance and abandonment. It is dangerous to life and property because the building is unsecure. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Peter?
I second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Now for 23, I'll open the hearing, 23184-01. This is a hearing to determine whether 789 Main Street identified as tax map L26 lot 48 and further described in the deed recorded in the York County Registry of Deeds at Book 18644, page 618, is a dangerous building or a nuisance within the meaning of 17 MRSA Section 2851-2859, and to determine what, if any, remedy is appropriate.
Thank you. So I'll, again, share with you the pictures of the property. This is the former Republic Ash Building on Main Street next to CVS and across the street from Hannaford. This is a little bit different than the typical residential building because it's a, a commercial building. This is the property, you can see it takes up about half the site and the rest is an asphalt parking lot fronting on Main Street. This is the way the front of the building looks. A number of abandoned signs on the side of the building, boarded doors. And that's what you can see in this picture. Some of the other pictures will reveal what the roof condition is, as well as some of the accumulation of rubbish and debris around. You can see that, that there's tarps on the roof covering holes. The, there's just some general debris left in the parking lot. There's a pile of items left here at the corner. That is, that really is just tree limbs and things in front of the door that have been left there. And this is how one side of the building looks. The power is, is not disconnected from the line, but there are no meters on this building at this point. You can see some overgrowth on this side of the building. Aaron points out in his notice of violation that these, these barrels are, are stored on the property of some, some item. Here's a close-up of those barrels in this corner of the property. There's, there's nothing in, in the property, so no, no personal property inside and furnishings are absent. It looks generally gutted, this is just visible through the, the windows. This is a boarded door, a close-up on that. And then also point out that, that you can see that the, the door, the building is locked with a chain. So here's a picture of the, the method of, of closing this up. Very much abandoned in this case. And some of the windows are, here's additional broken and boarded windows, the debris around the outside of the building. As far as the owner, owners go, it's, it's, it's owned by a number of individuals that live in town. Sung Vn, and I apologize for butchering that name. They purchased it in 2021 from Republic Ash, whether it be Rep Cash Properties LLC. They've had it since 2008. This is a copy of the, the deed. This was advertised in the newspaper. And then I will also have Aaron explain this when he talks about the notice of violation on this. He did serve as, as a constable, the, the owners. It is unsigned, but he did bring this to the property on three separate occasions, attempting to serve, and he did post this at the property as well. We both can talk about conversations we've had with the owner's representative about what they intend to do with this property. They've told us that they intend to demolish it. They wanted to build a smaller restaurant on this property. And at this point though, I have not heard, and maybe Aaron has more information at this point, whether had they have obtained the permits to do this. Police reports, there are responses in the, in the vicinity regarding this. And I'll have you, if you wanted to ask me any questions or follow up on any of these things, we could. But these are, this is the police report of activity in the vicinity as well. There is $3,688.13 outstanding in property taxes. This is not a lien, this is just outstanding taxes at this point. The water's been off since April 24th, 2020. So that's been prior to the current owner owning it. I think they have good intentions here, but may have more than they, they have signed up for. The sewer is inactive, the electrical service is not disconnected, but it's absent. And there's been no vacant building license obtained by this owner. So that's outstanding as well. I just want to point out that the building had a fire on March 6th, 2019. And that's, that was prior to the current owner, but while it was still owned by Republic Ash. Aaron, would you mind running the city council through your notice of violation?
So this was sent on March 21st, 2023 to the property owners, the address that we have on file. Let's see. So a lot of this will repeat some of the items that Ian mentioned. There was the fire, so was, there was the fire damage that was brought out back onto this violation notice. The fact that it had not been repaired, the property was still vacant and abandoned. As you could see in the photos, there was some deterioration due to the fire. You could see the tarps on the roofs in the satellite photo that was first presented. And then as well as a violation for the old business signs that have been vacated for some time. Those businesses have not been there for a couple of years. So we have the roof damage. I did mention those barrels, I do not know what's in them. They do not appear to be in good condition. I don't know how long those have been there, but we did ask for them to be removed by the end of March, oh, sorry, May, May 20th. Vacant building license, the previous owner did have one, but with the sale, the new owner has, has had a separate notice of violation sent previously before this one, asking for them to obtain that with no response. The electrical service is disconnected. We do see those exposed wires on the inside and the boarded doors, broken windows boarded up. And just the overall condition with again, exterior trim, broken pieces missing, holes inside the building. As we look at the photos, again, this was a little bit different at that point in time with all the snow. So I didn't see all of the debris that Ian, Ian had in those photos. But there's the overall condition of the property, very similar. Nothing has changed, no compliance with our notice and those due dates. Old signage, the damaged windows, doors. And then again, the interior of the property. This was deemed as with the fire had a tag on there for being condemned. And again, with those photos, everything here would fall under the state's requirements for a building that would be determined to be vacated and, and abandoned, dangerous. As you can see here, there's some damage on the, the roof with the stacks coming out of, out of it as well. And there's those holes in the side, missing flashing. Any questions about these violations?
No, my only comment is the barrels might be grease from the restaurant.
Could be.
I suspect, because we used to have barrels like that. It grows.
Peter?
So the owners now, they're not in any contact with the city of Sanford?
So their representative that I've talked with, Melissa Galant, who has owns several rentals and has built some houses in Sanford, came in to represent them and stated that they were going to be doing the demo for the owners of the building. They were hoping to do it before this meeting, but that was probably three weeks ago that they came in and stated that, and no permits have been pulled for the demolition yet. So I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Jonathan?
Yeah, I just, I had a similar question, just around. Yeah, I'm on. Yeah, thank you. Just, I had a similar question around communication. There's another, there used to be the, the Thai restaurant there and they moved and it sounds like it might be the same owners, I don't know.
Yeah, it's the same owner.
You know, it'd be great if we could just kind of work something out with them, but, but it sounds like there is some communication, maybe just the path forward hasn't been solidified yet in timing and that kind of things.
Correct, and that's, hopefully this will help with that.
Okay, thank you.
Ian?
I think our mics went from like too loud to too low or something. And I, I'm going to date myself, but this is sad to me. I got my letter jacket for math team at Dave's dugout. So it's, it's sad to see this. Because we don't see many commercial danger. I was seeing if anybody would catch that. That's, that was the thing. We don't see many commercial dangerous buildings. I can think of one other, maybe two, but anyway. My question is, if we deem this a dangerous building, does it in any way impact their ability to redevelop it as a, a little restaurant, which might, sounds like might be the intent? Or what are, what, what are the impacts to this on them continuing use?
As far as, I know they would still do the same process. They would submit their rehab plan, follow through with the permits and continue from, from there.
So I, I think I know where she's going. Once has been one year of not doing a particular business, no matter if they're rehabbing an existing structure or building a new structure, they're going to face the same code issues. Am I correct with what's mandated by codes? Even renovating is going to raise some stuff.
I believe they would have one here, but you can ask Jamie, he may-
Yeah, I'm looking at both of you, you know, because I think that's what she's raising is, is, you know, is doing this going to make their situation worse and trying to, to do what they would like to do on this site?
So I'm going to say that, so I, it wouldn't, so it'll, it'll help, it'll help somewhat. So I've had a conversation as well with Melissa Galant and, and Jamie can fill in too about the, the abandonment of the use versus the abandonment of the structure. So I've raised with the Galants that possibly you don't want to remove the structure because then that one-year abandonment section would click, kick in. But there's also the impact of parking and everything else related, related to the use. So that's something that, that Jamie can answer. I, I think from my perspective on this, the rehab plan and what they can do, it's, it's that communication that's really helpful. So when we're able to take that document and say, all right, we, we really do need to talk because the city council has found this to be dangerous, that really helps with that, that, that conversation, that negotiation, whether it's a commercial building or, or a residential building.
So yes, you are correct. The zone and ordinance does have a nonconformant section in it that says if it's been vacated for more than one year, you do lose that nonconformity. In this case, it's in the urban zone. Our urban zone is our least restrictive zone in the city. So there are actually not a lot of nonconformities that would, would, would come up in, in the process of it being removed. Most, I, I have talked with both the owners and the owner's rep. We've already had discussions on future plans and their future proposal will work even if they was to lose the, the grandfather status, as most people call it. They're, they're actually designing the site to, to meet today's requirements, even if they could potentially be grandfathered.
All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Can I ask something that's a little bit off topic but the same area?
Sure.
What about the Chainsaw Building that's been abandoned and looks a lot more dangerous than that one?
So I did just prepare the, yep, so that property does have a vacant building license and they do pay annual fees of approximately $10,000 a year. But I did just prepare a, the, the list of Land Bank properties for the Land Bank next Wednesday, and that was a recommendation for a hearing. And that was a recommendation for a hearing, July 18th, city council meeting. When I was there, I did take pictures, and actually Aaron had exactly the same thought, and we took pretty much the same pictures of the graffiti on the side of that building. The clothing strewn there and about, the building was open, windows were broken. So you will be hearing about that property once again.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I've seen it a few times recently, just like going to CVS, and it looks like it could be, possibly fall down or have some serious issues with the condition.
Can we wait for any other questions on that?
Yes, sorry.
Our hearing is still open on this one.
And, you know, these buildings, I mean, really, when they're abandoned like this, they do have impacts outside their property boundary, right? So it's not just the nuisance that the building itself is, they have spillover effects. And that's when it becomes a public nuisance, that's when it's the city council. So is it this building or the one next door that's driving the nuisance condition? It's really hard to tell, but this is the one we're addressing this week, this meeting, and we'll bring the other one forward at a later date.
Well, and we've seen in the past that sometimes it's forced the people who own it to finally do something.
That's true.
So it has worked in the city's favor. Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is closed hearing? Oh, there was nobody else to?
I don't think so.
I didn't see anybody online. Okay, so we'll close the hearing. 23-185-01, based on the testimony and other, am I on the right one? Yeah, based on the testimony and other evidence presented at this hearing pursuant to 17 MRS, Section 2851 and Section 2859 regarding 789 Main Street, what does the city council find are the facts, and what does the city council adjudge?
Madam Magar, I'd like to make a motion that based on the testimony of those present and other evidence presented and made part of the record, the Sanford City Council hereby attest to the testimony and evidence and hereby finds the following facts. A, the building, i.e. the property, appears abandoned as defined in 30-A MRSA Section 3106-B and City Code Section 149-6.3. And as evidenced by, no water service to the building since April 24th, 2020. Windows and doors are boarded and broken, electrical meter is absent, personal property and furnishings are absent, a building is locked with a chain, the roof is tarp to cover holes, debris has accumulated around the property. Code enforcement officer has made a determination of abandonment, and the property has deteriorated enough so as to constitute a threat to public health and safety. B, there was a building fire on March 6, 2019. C, the most recent inspection on March 21st, 2023, found violations of City Code Section 90-13B Subsection 5, 2015 International Property Maintenance Code, as adopted by reference. Section 108.1.5, property has been abandoned and is vacant and an attractive nuisance. Section 108.1.5, structure appears warped and deteriorated, roof damaged. Section 304.7, roof damage. Section 302.1, barrels stored on property exterior. Section 604.3, electrical meters absent. Section 304.1.5, doors are boarded and in poor condition. Section 303.1.3.1, broken windows are boarded. Section 304.1, exterior trim is missing and broken, holes in exterior walls. D, the owner and prior owner failed to obtain a vacant building license pursuant to City Code Section 149-6.5. E, the property is uninhabitable and may not be occupied without an approved rehabilitation plan. Based on the foregoing findings, municipal officers adjudged that the property is a dangerous building and public nuisance because the building is abandoned and unsanitary due to the length of time it has been vacant without sufficient repair after the fire, constitutes a fire hazard because of its state of abandonment, is unsuitable to the abandoned use to which it is put, and constitutes a hazard to health and safety because of inadequate maintenance, dilapidation, obsolescence, and abandonment, and dangerous to life and property because it is an attractive nuisance. The property is a public nuisance and must be abated or satisfactorily rehabilitated.
Do I have a second? Pete?
A second.
All those in favor? Thank you. 23-186-01, to Libby Lane. 23-187-01, 12 Central Avenue. 23-188-01, 789 Main Street. After hearing testimony and other evidence presented, and then making findings of fact, and if then adjudging, to Libby Lane, 12 Central Avenue, and 1889 Main Street, oh, 789 Main Street, to be a dangerous building or a nuisance pursuant to 17 MRSA Section 2851 and Section 2859, the city council now makes the following orders to abate the nuisance and appropriate corrective actions taken.
It is ordered, I don't know if it's a motion, but it is ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the property is to be immediately secured within 24 hours. And be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, the nuisance is to be immediately abated by removing and disposing of any non-rubbish debris, vehicles, equipment, household, human, or hazardous waste, and dangerous materials from the property. And be it further ordered that to protect the health, safety, and welfare, said dangerous building and nuisance is to be immediately abated, building removed, disposed, or secured. And be it further ordered, if the owner or property in interest demonstrates the ability and willingness to satisfactorily rehabilitate the property by submitting and having a rehabilitation plan approved by the city manager within 30 days of recording this order and carrying out such rehabilitation plan in a timely manner, the order to immediately abate the nuisance may be delayed. Such rehabilitation plan must include, at a minimum, all deficiencies listed as part of the findings of fact, as herein set forth, are corrected. The property is rehabilitated and brought into compliance with all applicable state and local codes, and meets all permitting and inspection requirements. And there shall be no occupancy or use of the building until the property has been satisfactorily rehabilitated. And be it further ordered that the city clerk record this order in the York County Registry of Deeds and cause attested copies of this order to be served upon the persons as required by law. And be it further ordered that if this order is not complied with, the city manager is hereby authorized and directed to ask for bids for the abatement of the said nuisance. And be it further ordered that if this order is not timely complied with and no timely appeal is taken, the city manager may undertake the ordered corrective action at municipal expense and recover all expenses, including reasonable attorney's fees, by means of a special tax or civil action. This decision may be appealed to Superior Court pursuant to main rule of civil procedure, ADB.
Thank you. We don't vote on that.
Yeah, we do vote on that.
Do we vote on that?
Yeah, so I need a second, that's a motion, so.
Ian?
And I'll second that.
All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you for your time.
That's it, all right. We've just got, any council member comments? Ian?
Thank you, I have just a couple, and I'll be quick. One, Friends of Downtown is doing their 2023 Boss Awards, which is Best of Sanford-Springvale Awards. You can get the link to vote on them via our Facebook page, which is Friends of Downtown Sanford. And we're looking for folks to tell us, you know, their favorite place to have pizza, their favorite realtor, their favorite, you know, place to have a picnic in town. And I just wanted to share that as I'm seeing responses come in, one of the questions is, you know, what's your favorite community event? Fourth of July is resoundingly getting a lot of positive feedback, as is holidays. And so I think we need to, one, commend the folks that make those events happen and start thinking a little bit about holidays, perhaps. Because I know there were some questions and concerns about that event last year, so I wanted to mention that. And then, the other thing that, I don't know that it needs to be an agenda item for discussion, but it came to my attention that the council is not included in the All-City emails. And when somebody emails All-City, or whatever the special code is for that, a lot of times it's about new team members that have joined, city staff, retirement parties, community events, and where the council's omitted from those, not on purpose, I'm sure. But I feel like there's things that might be nice for us to hear about that are happening that we might be able to attend and participate in. Retirement's are a big one, I was like, oh gosh, I would have gone to, you know. So that's, the third comment really quickly, Chief Anderson, I think you're humble in not wanting to put yourself out there as the chief of our police department. But I will say that when we have department leaders or, you know, high-ranking staff in our city, whether it's, you know, Jamie or yourself, or our chief at the fire department, at community events or at council chambers speaking, it actually makes people feel like those high, you know, those people in leadership positions are connected with us, with the community. People actually love to see city staff out at events. And so I think we introduce ourselves as chief of the police department, it's more, it more gives people a warm fuzzy, like, wow, our chief of police is showing up at this, you know, Friends of Downtown meeting, or whatever event you happen to be at. So we don't want you to brag or anything, but people actually like to know you're there. And that goes for other staff as well, so I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Anyone else with a comment?
Just a quick, just quickly. So we were talking about the Parks and Rec tonight, and you and I had chatted with, about the fact that we really, Council of Lanigan, now Representative Lanigan, used to represent us on the Parks Advisory. And I don't think anybody is now, and we were wondering if Nate wanted to pick that up.
I have a little note for Nate.
So Nate be thinking about it, because the mayor's gonna cause you, you know, because you do have a lot of knowledge of good old park at the very least, and an understanding of the park system to some degree, so.
And so we're gonna be meeting in just a few days to appoint people to different things, and so would you like to be considered for that?
Absolutely, thank you.
Not to put pressure on you.
Yes.
That's how you do it, you just don't let it go.
You're gonna be on Land Bank next Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. All right. And any future agenda items? I just have one, I would like an update on the circle that we had a design. I didn't know when that was gonna happen and everything, so it would be nice to know what was happening with that. And anyone else with items? Ian?
I have two. One, and I could be crazy, I can't, for some reason, go back in Granicus very far, I don't know if that happens to other people, but I was trying to find the notes. I feel like we approved a bid for some cutting to happen at Gateway Park. The dam, especially right now, which is like flood stage there, there is still a lot of tree growth happening in there. Do you remember that? Or did it never get to a?
I don't remember.
Okay, oh, Steve's laughing.
Well.
D P is all over that.
Yes. So permit by rule, for which we thought we could do, and then D P wants to have purview over that. So Brady Lloyd had still been working that review permit by rule. Let's see, the last correspondence that I saw from D P was quite a while ago. Do you remember what that was, Jamie?
We're trying to be creative in how to remove the trees legally. It's kind of a gray zone, because Shoreland Zone is administrated locally through the codes office. But I don't deal with stuff within the water body, and this is kind of like on a rock island. So it's kind of a gray area on who actually is going to be able to approve it. So we are in conversations with D P. This did happen now seven or eight years ago. We're trying to follow that same path. Steve actually was able to find some of those older documents so that we could try to navigate that same path. I don't remember the exact language of the last email, but it was from D P, and I believe they had questions on our choice of path. But I'll follow up with Brady to see if we can.
No, we're gaining herons and all sorts of wonderful waterfowl. I don't think they should really question what we're up to. We're doing a good job.
So the last time that we did the removal, they were just extremely concerned that we would leave any semblance of a leaf or brush or anything in the stream bed. I don't like beavers, beavers ever do that, but. But, you know, so my observation is, before, when we had full-time engineering services on Gateway Park, and they helped us obtain permitting process and such and to that. Since that point in time, there's like nobody within D P that still exists anymore from that time period and era. My observation is also, D P is absolutely overwhelmed for lack of staff. So getting any attention as far as something as lower priority as this has been very difficult and bad. So I just, we'll continue to chip away at it to see what we can do, but I wish, I was hoping that we could just do it by permit by rule, but I recognize why we can't. With a straight face, get it to pass, maintenance on the dam because of the distance between the dam and the ledge island, is all of that coming into play.
Well, thank you for the on-the-fly update. The other question I had, and I apologize because I feel like I should be able to find it in our e-codes, but I could not. I didn't think that we prohibited dogs in Central Park. Meaning, I thought that dogs were allowed in Central Park because we talked about it being, this was back under Mayor Code, he talked about it being a path into our downtown quarter, people would walk through. But I noticed just last weekend when I was in the park that it says no pets on that sign. I hadn't noticed it before. So I don't know if we could just double-check. If I'm wrong, fine, but if I'm right, that sign is wrong.
The hardest part, and I don't disagree with you, the hardest part with the dogs is that a welcoming community allows dogs, and a lot of places that we've disallowed them. And we've disallowed them because people don't pick up if there are dogs. And, you know, you wonder if we shouldn't just start being a little more aggressive on dealing with that issue and start allowing more dogs.
And I actually think that we allow them there, but the sign is wrong. But, so, and I just, I apologize, I couldn't, I just couldn't find it.
I hope they're allowed there, I see dogs there almost every day. So I wasn't aware that there was signage to the contrary, but I'll check our code, so.
Dogs go in cemeteries too, and, you know, stuff like that too. Saying no to dogs does not prevent dogs. Kind of crazy.
Anyone else with anything else for the agenda?
Come on, if it's really an agenda item, but I know we're getting into paving season again, so. What's that? Good times. Did we, I know I had asked a while back about getting a map of the paving plan. Did we get, have we gotten that yet, or is that still kind of in the works?
Was there a list of roads?
Yeah, we have a list of roads.
We have a list of roads, okay.
So creating that map is not a short-term, an easy pit. It has to be physically drawn into GIS and such and to that, but. So we have the five-year plan that shows what roads are listed in there, but that changes dramatically and quickly. So as we find out what the true cost to construct one is versus our estimates, priorities change as far as the condition is as well. But no, we have the current listing.
Is that?
Pretty sure that's posted on the website, I can go back and verify that.
So it's something pretty easy to find for most people, then?
Yeah, it should be there on the website, if not, we can post that there.
All right, I'll see if I can find it. I just know that comes up every year, so it'd be helpful to be able to point.
It might be something that we could work with Jordan to get on the projects page. I think that would be a good addition to the projects page, to have there as an ongoing basis. Let me check on that for you.
Pete?
Yeah, just real quick, I want to remind everybody that it's Little League season and softball season. So if you can go out and support the community and go catch a game, you should. It's pretty good, I went down the other night to the Little League park, and it was pretty amazing, some good baseball for nine, 10-year-olds, I was pretty impressed. So they're doing a lot of good, kudos to everybody in charge of the kids in baseball. So I just didn't want to have that not going without saying thank you.
Right. Thank you.